...the council to order. This evening, we are doing a budget work session. We are going to be beginning our detailed discussion of the city budget. We are going to be beginning with library, public works, and stormwater as soon as the librarian arrives. Until that time, we have council comments and public comments. Are there any council comments? Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I just like to apologize that I wasn't here Monday night for our budget hearing. I was at the Maryland Community Action Partnership Forum in Ocean City. So, I was taking lots of classes, but wasn't able to get back here for Monday evening.
That's all right. We just defunded Word Forum. The budget's now.
Maple Avenue is going to be going underwater.
I'm glad I'm back tonight.
Okay. Any other comments? Bruce?
Yeah, just a brief comment that I had made some comments. I guess Monday night that I was missing some of the more textual detail of past budgets. And at the mayor's urging, I've started putting together a list of the types of things that I was looking for, and I will give that to staff to show the types of things that I'm talking about. I just wanted to make it clear that I wasn't necessarily only talking about performance measures. And my example of the types of things that I'm looking for, I've already got a page worth, but I'll just give you the one off the top, which is looking for a trend of the percentage of the waste stream that we recycle to see what the trend is there. So, I will put that in form of a memo and distribute it.
Okay. That'd be helpful. Any other comments? Okay. Are there any public comments this evening? Any public comments? Do you want to go up to the podium? And we'd ask when you come up for public comments if you'd identify yourself and keep your comments brief.
Thanks. Sure. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Leah Rader. I'm a Tacoma Park resident. And the issue I'm bringing for the council is the topic of motion sensor nighttime lighting on Circle Avenue path between Woodland Avenue and Guti. Currently, there is lighting of this type on that path between Guti and Poplar, but not on the other part. And so, we've gathered signatures from surrounding neighbors that live near the path and also use the path for dog walking, jogging, those sorts of activities before sunrise and after sunset. And then also, in our neighborhood, a few crimes have occurred where we believe based on just things we've seen that the path was used as a way to exit our neighborhood area easily and quickly on foot because you can't follow in a car. For example, my house was broken into and I live very close to Circle Path. And things that were taken from my house were tossed out of a bag on Circle Path, between Woodland and Guti, and also in a yard next to the path. So, that leads me to believe, just based on that, that that was used as a nighttime exit. So, we think that sensor lights would help promote safety for people using the path and also could be a deterrent from thieves or burglars or whatever, just like trying to, you know, use it as an unobtrusive way to leave the area. So, any other information I should present or just kind of turn in our signature sheet on that?
Sure. That would be helpful.
Okay, great.
We will give it to the city clerk and she'll make copies of it for the entire council. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to make comments during public comment period? All right. Go ahead. Sure.
Thanks. My name is Mimi Ikaykasa. And it had just actually come to our neighborhood's awareness that Public Works was going to be doing their budget tonight. And there were a few things that I wasn't sure if it fell into the regular budgeting, just about getting some stuff like recycling containers and such for the PG Avenue Park. So, if there were things that we needed to get this kind of a letter for, you know, bigger tag items, since we don't really have a sense of what costs what to be included in the budget.
When you say recycling containers, you mean in addition to trash containers?
Yeah. In the PG Avenue Park right now, it's just a little triangle between the two PG avenues. And there is a lot of trash and bottles and stuff that gets put there that it would be easier if I didn't, you know, walk down the road and pick them up and take them back up. It would just make it easier for people to... So, there's nothing there now, no trash or recycling.
Okay.
So, that would be great to have. And also, for the past few years, we've been trying to do growing of wildflowers on that little strip, which was okayed by Mr. Welch, I guess, the gardener, city gardener. Anyway, so there's no water down there. Or if it was possible and inexpensive to get water down there, I know that that had been a site that was proposed for a community garden as well. So, I don't know what the current status of that plan is, but if it wasn't hard to, I know that there's water that runs, but I don't know if it's sewer water or what. I just know that there's a big plate that says water.
Okay.
That was pretty much it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to us. Anyone else? All right. We're going to start this evening with a discussion of the library.
I'll probably just make some introductory comments.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Now, just to start off, I'd probably like to just make a few introductory comments. We had, back in the middle of April, had provided the council with some supplemental information about each departmental budget, including a departmental budget at a glance. So, that's what I'm going to be referring to. As a reminder, since these documents were distributed, the city did receive notification that our health insurance cost had increased. So, I can kind of just give you an overview. We did not go back and recalculate each and every number since we envisioned that there may be some other changes the council wants to make. The overall numbers I'm going to give you basically reflect the increased cost of the health insurance since the budget was distributed to you. Overall, the library budget as proposed is essentially virtually flat, including the increase in health insurance costs. The overall budget is up just under $14,000. As I mentioned, we'll not mention what's on your sheet, which is about an increase of 1.6 percent. So, there's very few changes in terms of the bottom line of the budget, like many of the city department budgets. Virtually almost eighty-seven percent of the library's cost are basically personnel-related. There were some increases in services and charges. A lot of that had to do with some reclassification of expenditures. Basically, we had previously recorded some service contracts for some software as computer supply, so it sort of moved from one category for classification in the budget to another. Additionally, there is the lease and maintenance costs for a copier in the computer learning center. When Ellen and I were talking about maybe what would be of interest to the council in terms of the library budget, the thing that really stood out was probably the computer learning center, since that's been probably the biggest change operationally since last year. There was some information included in the agenda packet about the use of the computer learning center, some statistical, some sort of more anecdotal in terms of how people are using that. And with that introduction, I just turn it over to Ellen and Rebecca.
Well, that covered some of what I was going to say, actually. Looking at the... No, that's fine. I wasn't going to say exactly the same things. But looking at the aggregate figures you have on the library, I just wanted to point out that for the library, supplies actually includes not only office and computer supplies, but all the collection materials, you know, the books and the periodicals as well. Services and charges include pretty much what you'd expect, maintenance contracts, phone postage, outreach, copying, and rebinding. The miscellaneous is mostly for training. Overall, the operating budget for the library increases just under $5,000 for next year. Looking at the computer learning center, here, supplies, the amount for supplies is, represents more what you'd expect, office and computer supplies and some small furnishings and equipment that we weren't able to purchase initially. I can go into any details of that that you like. Services and charges include, again, phone, maintenance contracts associated with the large Canon copier printer that is outside the computer rooms, and the printer in the senior room. And miscellaneous is mostly for training. The budget for the library is, again, mostly a no-growth budget. We plan with the support of the Friends of the Library and the funds we received through the Friends from the Mike Morrissey donations to continue or expand existing programs, such as the Thursday morning circle time in Spanish, which is new this year, the bi-monthly reading group with the support of the Friends, programs like the Favorite Poem Event, the College Bound Series, the regular circle time, which draws up to 100 adults and kids between 80 and 100 every Tuesday morning, outreach programming in the schools, special programs such as Philosophy with Chris Phillips, Thomas Eagle Bear, holiday storytelling, and so forth. We also anticipate that our programs, particularly the children's programs, will probably diversify in some new directions under the coordination of a new children's services coordinator in the next year. Regarding the computer learning center, it began operations in one room on a limited schedule on December 11th. Both rooms were open by mid-March. It currently operates 43 hours a week, and this will be increased to 50 hours when Phase Two of construction is completed, the additional hours. Now, it's open Monday, Monday through Thursday, 12 to 8, Friday, 12 to 6, Saturday, 12 to 5. And it will be open an additional two hours on Friday and 12 to 5 on Sunday when Phase Two is completed. The budget for the computer center includes personnel costs for a fully-staffed facility that is one 30-hour person and two 10-hour staff people. The operating costs, as I said, are mostly associated with printers serving senior room and the computer rooms, replacement, I'm sorry, replacement computer supplies and consumables, and furnishings like stools, a garment rack, posters, just some additional things that we thought would make, you know, use of the room easier for patrons. The budget this year or proposed for next year, I just want to point this out, does not include the cost for the userful software and replacement hardware that will occur on a three-year cycle. And that will come up in fiscal year '09. This past year, it was approximately $27,000 and was paid for by the Tacoma Foundation. So, there might be a slight increase from that, but it wouldn't occur for another two years.
Shouldn't that be in the equipment replacement reserve?
It is probably something we will be doing, but obviously, it has not started yet. This is the type of item which was part of the rationale for increasing the contribution to the equipment replacement reserve is to start setting aside funding for items such as this.
And at this point, the 20 computers in the two computer rooms and the four computers in the senior room are well-used. You have statistics that Rebecca can explain a little bit more, provided by Userful. They're really just for the month of April, in part because it was a while before the rooms, the facility was completely operational, and also because providing statistics was new for Userful, and it was a while before they could refine them in a way that was useful to us. But Rebecca can explain the handout you've been given. And also, the comments were provided by Phil Shapiro, who's the main staff person. They're largely anecdotal, but do give some of the flavor of what's happening there and, you know, some of what makes it well-used and an interesting place. So, at this point, I'd like to ask what questions you have.
Any other trends that you've noticed in the attendance at the library and at the programs and the overall circulation of your collection?
Well, I don't have hard statistics in front of me. They are obtainable, though, because we always keep statistics on use of materials and circulation. I do believe that partly because of the improvements in parking and partly because of the opening of the computer rooms, use has definitely increased. Rebecca, do you have anything to add?
There's a national trend, and fewer items checked out, more use inside the library by people. And that's exactly what I see. There are more people physically present in the library than I ever remember being there before, and yet, not as many checking out books. So, this is not just us. This is nationwide.
But I...
And I don't have a good analysis for all the causes of this.
I wonder why.
Yeah, it's through the whole country. Oh, and in England also. I did see some statistics from England exactly the same.
I do think, though, that actual checkouts are probably, are increasing now from last year, where we really did feel the effects of very limited parking in the construction. And I could certainly follow up for you with documentation showing the statistics.
Are you happy with the increase in the number of books that are purchased each year, or are we still?
Well, it's a small facility, and I believe that the budget we have for print resources is definitely adequate to meet our needs because, you know, we have to be careful what we include in a small community library, simply because there's a limited amount of space.
I know there was some question about the possibility of using the coin-operated printer in the computer learning center as a copier as well. Has there been any change in the status of that? Is there any potential future?
It's been discussed, and I think it's something we're recommending because it would definitely add to the revenues from the copier. Right now, it's used strictly as a printer.
But it is physically a copier.
Yes.
It's a Canon colored copier. So, with the addition of a VINT unit.
Yeah, we'd have to have an additional VINT.
With an additional VINT unit to be used as a public copier.
And your sense is that that would kind of more than pay for itself?
I think it'd be well-used.
It should.
If you look for it, the one in the library, which is as black and white, is well-used. We have a figure somewhere.
Again, I can provide figures.
It's a tangible amount of money to give.
I don't have those, but I could provide them to you. And I, it's certainly something that would generate more revenue because it would be a second public copier for the, really, for the public in the city, which there's only the one in the library now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. That relates to the question I had, and that is, you know, the programs. Do the program budgeting fall under the library, or does it fall under the Recreation Department for the computer learning center?
By program budgeting, you mean?
The revenues and expenses related to the programs that take place in the computer learning center.
Well, the two computer rooms and the computers in the senior room are directly under the library. The other activities in the senior room and the media room are under the Recreation Department. Was that your question?
Well, I guess, as I look through the budget, I don't see any, anything that projects the potential revenues for the programs that go on at the computer learning center or...
We don't, we don't charge for public use of the computers. So, I think that's something that we're, we don't charge for.
Were we being charged for programs that take place there?
They're being used as public access computers all the time. I mean, there are people on them all the time. The one class we have now, we're thinking of, we have a volunteer who would be willing to teach some on Thursday evenings, but we're not going to get volunteer teachers if, you know, the revenue generating things, I think, rather than they're being willing to give this to the community. We had a community volunteer who taught the seniors on Wednesday mornings. Everybody had to be over 55, I think, to be in the class, and there was no charge to them. And it was taught by a community member who did it as a volunteer. I have another possible volunteer who'd be willing to teach people who are, who has taught people in Africa and a couple of other places, very beginning computer skills, how to move a mouse. And he would be willing to do that here, and he has experience in different cultures and in different languages doing this. But he's not somebody who would be hiring to put on a paid program. He would do this as a volunteer contribution to help the most needy of people.
I will say that Phil Shapiro is starting to work with the Recreation Department in helping with some of their programs in the media center. Deborah could probably address, you know, more of that, but...
Those are...
And I believe those are revenue generating because they're running programs.
Yeah.
And I guess I saw it relating to the question on the copier, because I don't see in the budget where we actually see where the revenues are.
The revenues from printing are thus far very small. I mean, again, they will be part of the revenues for the fiscal year, but when you consider that, you know, really, the computer center has only been open for a few months, we charge 15 cents a page for people who want to do printing. We are keeping track of those revenues separate from the library copy, copy revenues specifically, so we'll know what they amount to, but I couldn't tell you that right now.
But either of those numbers appear in the budget?
No, because there's no, there's really no precedent to protect next year as yet. I think it's really just too many.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we don't charge in the senior room.
That's true.
They give, they're printing for free.
Libraries aren't...
Dead money.
Libraries aren't generally revenue generating, are they? Do the components of libraries not revenue generating?
Not, not, it's not part of the mission.
Right. I understand that.
But with our computer learning center, I would think that there's possibly classes that...
Well, those would be under, the revenue generating ones would be Rec.
Well, you know, time will, it's still in this facility, and we don't know that we might not have, you know, classes, fee-based classes in the future. A lot of things were talked about as this facility was planned and envisioned before it came to be, you know, but right now, it's still getting off the ground. And the people who are using it and seem to really love it are the people who don't have access to computers in their homes and...
And I wasn't trying to encourage you to be in charge. I was trying to just track the budget and figure out where these things are reflected in the budget.
I think you're going to see all kinds of things evolve in that center over time.
Thank you.
We tend to have fairly low income, but not altogether. And to our surprise was that we had so many people from Hurricane Katrina. There was no way we could have anticipated that we would be the place where they could go and try and get their lives reorganized. So, I was amazed at the number of people we had brought from Louisiana who were in the area and using the computer center to, you know, put together stuff. For identification, we were accepting even letters from FEMA because we got no ID.
Did you want to talk to us about the numbers?
Well, this, yeah. These are an underestimate because for some of the machines, some days are missing, but lost. It's tricky because if they can't connect in to pick up the figures on a given day, which happens like if the IP address changes or something. So, these are no way overestimates. They're slightly underestimates for some of the computers that went a week or a few days without being counted. The sessions, people have different choices of sessions in different rooms, partly that's the way I set them. Internet in office would just be basic access. Kids takes the person who signs on directly to a set of pages I made with entry into the databases that are provided by the schools for the students, so they can click on the kids and they go right away, pick your school, and there are the links to your databases that the school system has paid for your access to as well as ours. There is a large print and a big print. The same thing, it's different rooms. Because in the senior room, I don't limit the session length, the senior room sessions have different names. Quick email, a couple stations are set up as standing stations, and those are people who can just, short time, can just go in and check their email quickly and get bumped off. So, that's the difference. Most people, even kids, sign on the internet in office. So, those are the differences. That's, so by far the most popular, and that's why it's distorted, hard read, so it's seriously. The next one is just how long people tend to stay on. And that's going to spread out over. A number of people staying on for the whole length of the time that they're allowed. The day of the week, difference is the two Sunday logins are, of course, me coming in and working on the software, since it's not actually open on Sunday. And as you can see, Friday is the lowest access, but we're only open over there for six hours on Friday instead of eight hours as we are Monday through Thursday. I think even when we're open later on Friday, it will still be low, probably compared to the other days. I have no idea why Wednesday is the most popular. Is that it? Any more questions? It's pretty constantly used. If you walk through there and you look, it depends on the time of the day, who is using it, and so forth, but I think there are almost always people there of one sort, and a lot of seniors.
Has there been any thought to opening the facility on Sundays?
It will when the passages are connected. The hours will be Saturday...
12 to 5.
No, they're now 12 to 5. It'll be Saturday, 12 to 6, and it will be Tuesday, 2 to, Sunday, 2 to 6. So, it'll be open, is that 10 hours on weekends.
One of the things that came to us as a recommendation for the TASD committee was to look at possible changes in the way the library was used. We've had a very preliminary discussion of that and decided to wait until we had some more experience with the computer learning center. Just looking at the information that you've given us, it appears to me that there's a variety of things that are being picked up at the computer learning center. And I also suspect, just from looking at the very preliminary numbers you've given us, that we probably, it probably hasn't settled down into what's going to happen. So, I would think it's probably premature to revisit that issue yet, because, as you said, the computer learning center has only been open for a few months, and we probably will continue to see changes in its use as the back of the building is opened up and people can go through. So, it's probably premature to revisit that issue yet.
Right.
It's sort of isolated now, physically isolated from anything else that's happening. And I think the thing that we see most in the library, the effect on us is through the senior, which has the spillover in terms of older people using the library is amazing and surprising, partly because we have the only bathroom.
Is that what I thought you meant when you said using the library?
Probably, in and out. They'll stop and read a magazine or check out a book or, you know, so. They end up, we have to pay more attention to our large print collections. Now, the most visible change to me is the older population, which didn't come to the library when it was just coming to the library, but now you can come for bingo and come in the library and use a computer. And it's such a rich resource for them now. So, my congratulations to Rec for what they've done with that senior program. I see that.
Well, that sounds like we're finally up to the technological age, so...
Yes.
In terms of our community providing access to people who wouldn't otherwise have it. Any questions?
Yeah, you see, we have to do a special session just for resumes set up, so...
Uh-huh. That's good.
People are going with ready-made templates, because that was important. We were getting pretty messy resumes when people would just go in and type what they thought it should look like. So, providing a fill-in-the-blanks template, those people come out of there with gorgeous resumes.
That's really good. Anything else? Well, thank you. This has been very helpful, and we'll, maybe we should continue to have some presentations on the computer learning center as it sort of develops, even not waiting, not waiting us for the next budget. Okay.
And come on, visit us. We're very, very proud of what's happening up there.
Thank you. Very, very interesting to hear the variety of things. Next up, we're going to take a look at Public Works in Stormwater, which is sort of grouped together.
How we refer to the budget at a glance for Public Works, and I'll just give you the total numbers with the increase in the health insurance. As is shown on the summary sheet, that was included in Monday night's packet. The health insurance increase has affected all the budgets. The new number for Public Works is $3,507,759. The new number for public works is three million, five hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. What that equates to overall, as far as the department's budget, is an increase of fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, or 1.6%. As was noted on sort of the budget at a glance sheet, overall personnel costs, and I would note even with the increase in the health insurance for public works, are down. It's kind of attributable to two things. One is employee turnover where you had a very tenured person leave and replaced with someone new who makes a lower salary. And Daryl has also made a decision to do kind of a departmental reorganization. And in lieu of basically kind of replacing herself in her former position as deputy, has elected to have a facilities manager position to kind of help oversee the expanded facilities that we have with the community center. So that's part of the reason for the decrease as well in personnel cost. Major areas of increase are going to be in services and charges and supplies. And those are primarily attributable to something we're all experiencing, which is increased cost for utilities in all the city buildings, as well as increased cost for diesel and gas. The items that we had thought might be of interest to the council, and certainly anything's open for discussion, is to talk a little bit about some of the specific street projects. To sort of look at where we've been with the street loan proceeds that the city took out, I guess in July of 2005. Give you an update on how that program stands, what is planned for fiscal '07. And then to probably update you on the Stormwater capital projects list. Obviously, that was something the council had extensive discussion about in the latter part of February. But we thought it would be helpful as part of the budget process to revisit where we're at with that capital projects list. So with that, turn it over to Daryl and Ali.
I guess I just add, I think that managers pretty much summed it up. Division by division, things are pretty stable from this current year to when we're proposing next fiscal year. The administration budget is actually down as a result of the change over the deputy position into the facility supervisor. That position is now reflected in the building maintenance division, so that is an increase for the salary of that. Also in building maintenance, we have additional costs for utilities and some subcontract work. Basically, what we found there is the kind of subcontract work that we're having to do, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, fire alarm systems. Was beyond what we had budgeted in this fiscal year, so we've adjusted the numbers to reflect more of what we're actually spending. Now, that being said, once I have a facility supervisor person in place, I'm hoping that the contract cost, the subcontract cost can be reduced. Because I'm actually hoping that what we'll find is someone with qualifications and certifications in one, if not more, of those fields. So some of the stuff that we're currently having to contract that for, I'm hoping we may have someone on staff. So the funds are there to reflect what we need now. But in the event that the skill level of our internal staff is able to be increased, then we'll not have to use all those funds. Equipment maintenance, the increases there are fuel and tires. The right-of-way division is actually stable from last year. The salary line is actually down again, as Barb mentioned, as a result of a changeover from long-term staff to new staff. Solid waste division is stable. The gardens division has had a slight increase in the temporary line and the supply line. The urban forest is identical to this year, with the exception of an addition, of course, of intern funds. Added additional $6,000 to try to bring on an intern to assist Brett with any number of functions. The thought is, working with universities in the area that have a forestry program, where he can bring somebody in, basically, to do either code enforcement type stuff or tree analysis type stuff, or just, you know, try to help him on a, on a part-time basis. The city engineers budget is also pretty stable with the addition also of intern funds. Basically, what we're trying to do there is cost-effectively add to the number of work hours that we have available, but we can't afford full-time staff. So we're trying it out through the concept of interns. I think we've seen that used real effectively in the housing office and the planning office. And so we'd like to try that in public works as a way to get some additional people, people hours in the field with, you know, at a kind of a cost-effective rate. So that's sort of the overview. Any other particular questions? I guess I just wanted to address the comments that were made at the start of the meeting. The trash containers and recycling containers, we budget for those in a, in a operating budget within the solid waste division. So additional containers, I think we buy like six or 10 a year. We can set those out. That, that won't be a problem. That's something we can address right away. The idea of water in PG Avenue Park, the initial thought I had, the most cheapest way to do that would be through a hydrant meter, which we already have. Our gardens division gets a hydrant meter. It's basically a water meter that's portable, that you attach to a fire hydrant and then have a hose. Our gardens division uses that. We pay, you know, it tracks how much water you use and you pay a rental fee for it. So we've got that anyway. So depending on what type of water they were looking for, we may be able to coordinate it with our own staff and provide them the hydrant meter, you know, a certain day of the week. Or I don't know yet what, what it is they're looking for. I'm guessing also there's a hydrant within the, within the area. Given that it's near New Hampshire Avenue and a lot of residential areas, I'm assuming that there would be a hydrant within, hopefully, you know, 200 feet or so of that area. If not, then we'd have to take a look at something else. Otherwise, to get a water source would be a very costly item. Basically, you'd have to get a meter, you'd have to do, have the plumbing work done. That's all got to be WSSC permitted plumbers. And so it's nothing that we could do just kind of off the shelf. But anyway, so that's just my, off the top of my head thought about that. We may want to try it with a hydrant meter, which is just a matter of a couple hundred bucks a year and see if that, that's a patient for what they need.
There's been a lot of interest in Ward Two sidewalks. And we don't really have, that I can see, kind of a sidewalk installation coming. And I know I, I heard talk of prioritizing sidewalks that were on pathways to the schools, which is primarily in this area. But I just want to put it out there that there's, there's a lot of interest in sidewalks. And we might be thinking about how we could come up with mechanisms for getting sidewalks in those areas of the community, which I think is mostly the old PG areas that don't have, that don't have sidewalks.
If I can go back, I don't know how many years ago now, I'll pick eight. We had some, maybe it was four or six, we had some discussion about adding sidewalks in various places. And we never really came to a conclusion. We started adding some parts and things. But the way we said to deal with it at that point was, gee, if people want to get together and add sidewalks and do a special assessment, that's an easy way to do it. And it's not that expensive and it reflects the fact that the property values are lower because they don't have sidewalks. And if you get sidewalks, it is higher.
Can they pay for it in a longer period of time rather than for one year?
Yeah, I think that the folks that I talked to in Ward Two are going to say that they're going to, one, have their sidewalks come out of the balance of resources that are distributed around the community. I think there are a lot of advantages of being like in walking distance to the community center as opposed to people who are out in the outer areas that aren't in walking distance to the community center. They don't have the, you know, the kind of same ease of access to get here and sidewalks is something that our group is interested in. But certainly, you know, we could talk about doing an assessment. Another issue is, I can't think of the name of the street right now, but it is, it runs parallel to Carroll on the backside between Chaney and Carroll. And it's a little unpaved area back there.
Yeah.
Palmer?
Oh, Palmer Lane.
Palmer Lane. Palmer Lane has not been paved and it's not on this paved list that I see. And it's in terrible condition, you know, one of the worst conditioned streets, I think, in the ward. And it would be great if it could find its way up on the, on the paved list.
Is that, is it a public right-of-way or is it private?
It's, I believe it's public right-of-way.
It's public right-of-way.
And it was admitted in the, in the street study, I think it was one that they assumed was an alley, a private alley and was missed.
Yeah, and it's, there's like, there's nothing left of it, so. And then another issue is a safety issue that Drew Summers brought up, which is about the, there's kind of a pathway that goes from Carroll as you're coming, like from Flower, walking along Carroll to the bridge and on the, on the Ward Two side. And there's a path that goes down there to the, to the park area and it's pretty, it's pretty dangerous. It's eroded off. I don't know if that's our property.
Parking planning.
Yeah, it's, it's got, you know, big, that big ugly orange plastic wrap fence around it. And I guess a couple of people have gone down there and slid the rest of the way down the hill, so. And then another issue that has come up, and this is the last one, is that a lot of work was done, I think, before I got to the council by previous council people and the mayor regarding traffic calming along Sligo Creek Parkway. And there was a whole plan that was done that shows the speed tables and they were going to fund it. And the funding was coming up this year. And as I've been tracking this, what I've discovered is that the county council has decided that Parks and Planning is no longer going to do the road improvements along Sligo Creek Parkway. Just at the time they were getting ready to install our, our traffic calming devices. And the county has decided that that's all going to be done by the county's public works department, which has been, I think, at best, non-responsive. And after several calls to the, to the, to the county and to Tom Perez's office, he finally, you know, pried a phone call out of them. But the guy barely left his name and didn't leave his phone number for me to call him back. The reason why this is such an issue, besides the traffic calming issue, is that the folks who have kids who stand at the bus stop and it's on Sligo Creek Parkway, right across from Aspen Avenue, were kind of standing out there exposed on the highway. And the idea was that a, a speed table there, if they couldn't find a protective ALCO for the kids standing, at least the speed table would slow them down as they approached the, the bus stop. And, I mean, I don't know what we can do about that. If, if the county is looking to get rid of the maintenance, you know, could they pay us to do it? Could we figure out at least how to make something happen for that spot where the, where the bus stop is for, for the interim?
Certainly try to contact them. I don't know what the relationship must be between parking planning and, like, every kind of public works and transportation. It's not an obvious, it's not an obvious link to me, so that would seem highly unusual. But we'll give a call and see what they say.
I follow up with Mary Bradford.
Jim Hoff, I think, was the guy's name, but he garbled it and didn't leave a phone number.
I talked with her last week and she is recently appointed to, to the Parks Division. And I asked her about, because I'd had some traffic calming on my stretch that was also being like that.
It's supposed to go all the way to Colesville.
Right, and she said that there was, there were some things they were about to come forward and I'll find out where they were. And then let you know.
And they were going to repave the section right at the bottom of Heather Avenue. And they didn't do it when they did the rest of it because they were still working on something or other. But anyway, it's serving as a traffic calming measure because you can't go there quickly.
Maybe we shouldn't use a bus stop over there.
Thank you, Daryl. I was curious, you mentioned, I think it was, that you had mentioned that the personnel costs were going down in, was it roadways or?
The right-of-way division, actually, has a reduction in salaries.
And to what did you attribute that reduction?
We had a long-term right-of-way supervisor who's no longer with the city. And so we went from a, you know, 30-year employee to now, that position is vacant, but we'll fill that. So it'll be, you know, beginning level supervisory position. It'll be at the end of the pay scale.
Yeah. The other question I had is, I know that Public Works uses quite a few temporary employees, temporary labor. And I just wondered if we pay livable wage for all of those?
I believe they get about six and a quarter, six, six fifty an hour. We pay the temp agency thirteen dollars an hour, generally speaking.
And do they get benefits?
I don't believe they get any health benefits. Workers' comp and things are covered, but that's all.
Thank you.
Could we look at that? Because it seems to me that we're, we're paying people effectively six fifty an hour. How many hours a week do they work?
Generally speaking, forty hours a week, usually when we have people here, it's for the whole, the whole week. I'm thinking of things like leaf season, which is a six or seven-week-long stretch of time where they're here full-time.
I frankly would rather find a way of paying people 10 or 11 bucks an hour and not paying a temp agency. But there's got to be some better way of hiring people temporarily. Because I see no reason for a temp agency to get half of what we pay them for absolutely doing nothing. And the people that go out and work every day getting six fifty an hour, because that's nowhere even close to livable wage.
We'd be, I'd be happy to talk to those folks about what the options are. I mean, that's just been the existing situation. Since I became director, I implemented a procedure change so that we're limiting our temporary employees to very specific projects and very limited points of time. In the past, it kind of extended beyond which, and so people were sort of serving as a full-time employee, except not being afforded the benefits of a full-time employee. The cost, of course, when you bring someone on full-time with the added health costs and other insurance costs becomes very expensive. So we're able to produce more hours, work hours, for less money, which is the interest of the temps. But, you know, we certainly would entertain any discussion about it.
I, I'd say I'd hope you look at something, because the idea of paying somebody six fifty an hour is just obscene. I, it's just, I don't, I think it's wrong. We ought to figure out a way to pay people. And I can't imagine anybody living on that money.
Well, I could do a quick calculation about what the financial impact of that would be just from our department alone. And it would be substantial. I mean, the increased cost from going from six fifty to 11 or 12 dollars an hour for the amount of temp hours that we currently use would be significant.
Is there another way to hire people around using a temp agency for? Because you're paying 13, you said. So it's not like, you know, it's not like we're not paying 13 an hour. We're just paying 650 to people who do no work. Who don't do.
He means, he means the overhead cost.
Right, the agency.
It's like, not like there's somebody who do no work.
Well, they pay workers' comp and they pay as hardly required.
Could we look at if we spent the same money and then we figured out how much it cost us to provide the overhead cost? Because we would have to do, you know, hiring and processing and payroll. What we could...
I guess at some point I'm going to have to look to White House.
The biggest, the biggest issue that you have with temporary is that they're not full-time. You need, you have leaf season for a couple of months and we need additional help.
Can we do seasonal, we can't do seasonal on call.
We can, but then you have, then we take on all the additional workers' comp. We take on the unemployment.
Well, I think the issue would also be, do you have a large enough pool to draw from when you need them? For, because obviously, if we're only using people sporadically, they may be looking for other jobs. So when you go back to try to call that person, he or she may not be available. And you really don't have time when you're in the middle of leaf season to be trying to just, on the dime, try to find somebody to make up that need. That would be a concern.
It does provide a recruiting tool. I mean, the services that companies that we use provide us is that the people that show up are, you know, qualified to do the work. Whereas when we're just even with our own job efforts to identify people, we have to sift through lots of unqualified candidates. And so the amount of recruiting time alone would require sort of somebody on it full-time to do it.
It also is a, the factor of if we don't have laborers for the back of the truck, the trash trucks, we can call today and get them. You don't have to hire, if somebody gets sick on programmed leave. It's, it serves a purpose. One of the benefits of sometimes getting temps is we see good ones and we have hired people. So it, it aids us in hiring better people because you see what their work level is before you hire them.
I understand. I really appreciate Mark's point. And I really appreciate this discussion because I've felt for some time that we were not paying people enough to support their families. To be, not even self-sufficient, I mean, not above poverty wages. And so I appreciate this discussion. I wonder if maybe a, a solution might be to continue to use temps as we do today, but to negotiate a different agreement with the agents. but to negotiate a different agreement with the agencies that you use whereby we can fulfill our moral obligation and pay enough money so that the workers receive a livable wage.
That's probably very possible.
I guess just while we're having the same discussion, is, does the council have the same concern about the use of clerical temporaries in the department or seasonal employees hired by the Recreation Department when we're talking about hourly wages? Because I can certainly assure you, we're not paying some of the folks who are working in the Recreation Department as part-time employees, eleven to twelve dollars an hour. I'm just trying to get a sense of, is it just limited to Public Works or is it a broader issue that would affect a number of departments?
Most of the recreation people are high school and college kids.
Not all, though.
Not raising them, not all.
Yeah, not all, so.
Could you give us an analysis of what the situation is and maybe we could look at and figure out?
That'd be fine. Just wanted to get a sense of whatever information you might like.
And it just prompts me to ask whether a possible, whether it would change the mix any if we were to try and hook up with CASA and day laborers for some functions and whether that might change how things get paid.
It's been discussed with them, but they don't cover, they don't cover workers' comp and whatnot. When you take somebody on that's a temporary and they know they're only going to be there a short time, the liability that we're taking on is considerable.
If they get.
They have given, it's on us and you wind up paying for a long time. There are a lot of honest people out there and there are some who aren't so honest.
I've experienced that situation.
Would it just be helpful to get, you know, to get an analysis of what the situation is? How many people do we have? How long do we typically get employed for? And then maybe we could look at some ways of working around. I agree that part-time teenage help programs is different than people were looking at to be on for season.
I've got a couple of questions and I thought, gee, I had my list of ones that I gave an example of at the beginning and I could, I could do the other ones that pertain to Public Works now and, you know, maybe you've got an answer off the top of your head, maybe you say, gee, I can get you that. Maybe, there may be some where it's like, well, we could do that, but it'll take a while. Is there a simple answer that, you know, off the top of your head will do? But I'll just, the one I gave before was the trend of the percentage of the waste recycle, because I know in, in the budget I was looking at in ninety-nine, it was forty-four percent. In FY two thousand, it was forty-six percent. And in oh-one, it was forty-eight percent. So it seemed like a trend, but I wondered, you know, it's almost just whether that trend was continuing, whether we were over fifty percent.
My guess, and I don't have hard numbers, is that we've, that there is a trend, but that it's a slight, it's a slight drop. And I think we've had this discussion before. It's actually, in my opinion, and in many other professionals' opinions, not as a result of lower participation, but as a result of the change in the waste stream itself, moving away from a lot of glass and into plastics. There's much more sort of paper, plastics, that kind of thing in the waste stream. So actually, our overall waste per person tends to be being reduced. The percentage that we pick up recycling-wise by item is probably at or above, but the weight of that, which is how we historically track it, is by weight. So what we used to get, you know, Coke bottles, we now get, they were glass, we now have plastic, and so they just don't weigh anything. So my gut-level guess would be that the rate is continuing to reduce, but it's not as a result of lower participation, it's just as a result. And since we do know statistical analysis where we actually are capturing trash and weighing what percentage is what, you know, I've got no hard data to compare it against.
But that's, you know, that answer suffices. Streetlight maintenance tracking, any comments on that?
Well, the new email system into Kim Watson's assistant seems to be the most effective streetlight maintenance tool we've had.
Good.
Since I've worked for the city, which is now clocking in some years. I don't know that we can bank on that as a permanent fix. I'm still waiting for it to fall off. There's, my only limited concern with that is they're batting about seventy-five, twenty-five. They say they're fixed and people tell us, oh, no, they're not on this one, this one, this one. So there seems to be a communication breakdown within Pepco itself where they report a hundred percent repaired and they're actually seventy-five percent repaired. But then when we give them back that additional numbers, they're then bumped up to it. For as long as it lasts, it's a great system. Otherwise, we have the call-in Pepco line, which is, has traditionally been the way that we, you know, let them know about outages.
Okay. Any ideas on the cost of event setups and whether if we start adding event setup costs like was requested for the house and garden tour in that discussion, what impact that has?
I could give you some exact figures about event setups, because we actually budget some of them on an overtime basis for events like the Street Festival. We have our entire right-of-way division there for a total of eight to twelve hours apiece.
I think it would just be good to have some information on what's involved in that, a sense of what we do and if there were additional requests in that area, what that might be.
I can just tell you, generally, I mean, I can produce some information that ranges the types of events. There's others where we set up on Friday and then break down on Monday. They're not on an overtime basis, it's absorbed within the existing department, but it's a significant impact on my staff, because I lose, you know, half of a division to do a setup for a festival. So I basically lose a day, because half a Friday, half a Monday.
Right. Because I think that's looked upon as something that's a kind of free service of the city. It doesn't cost anybody while it's got cost.
And in addition to that, we also have things like trash can recycling container setups that we're continuing to have to replace and restock because they, you know, break down and they're used over time. So it's a kind of a small item in our budget where we, you know, are buying festival containers every year, you know, a few hundred dollars, where we supplement what we have, trash can liners, those kinds of things. So I could give you a pretty, pretty good breakdown of what it costs for us to.
Okay. I've got three more. I don't want to, you know, take everybody's time on these, but I just want to put them out there. And so if there's simple answers or if you can get us stuff. Mulch sales, any trend on that?
I haven't seen numbers yet for this year on mulch sales, other than to say that, you know, it's always very popular. We started about second week of March, as we usually do. We are now booked up through the middle of June in terms of delivery. So every Friday, we deliver on Friday, we run two trucks. We usually, in this time of year, April, May, June, are pretty busy, but we've never been booked so far in advance. So my guess is we will be running a little higher than usual in mulch sales this year. Of course, our goal is always to get it out of here as quickly as possible. So I'm hoping that we don't have to do it every Friday from now through the beginning of the season. We have worked some arrangements out with Montgomery County, Park and Planning to use things, and we always encourage large users to come in and grab it. Not that we're not hungry for the revenue, but just, again, using half of the division for a day every week to deliver mulch is a time-consuming item. So it saves us money in that we don't have to transport the leaves. When we collect them, we can bring them right on-site. So overall, it's a very cost-effective program for us. But delivering the mulch is an expensive endeavor, just in labor.
Yeah, it's a high opportunity cost.
But my guess is that we'll be slightly above, you know, mulch sales this year as compared to last.
The refuse and recycling cost of collection per household figures, any particular changes in those?
Well, because the cost for tip fees has been fairly stable and actually recycling costs have been fairly stable and in fact even beneficial. The county has, doesn't charge us from paper recycling, you know, for a while it was a fifteen-dollar a ton charge. So actually, our costs are at or below what they have been historically for the processing. And our salary costs, which are the other big part of that, again, are relatively down because of staff changes. We've lost a lot of long-term sanitation employees, we've brought on some fairly new guys, you know, less than five years. So overall, it probably is, the cost has dropped per household, just because of the combination of factors, less of the salary load and the county staying stable with both the tip fee as well as the processing fee for recycling.
Yeah, because I know my sense over a fairly long period of time is that Public Works budget has increased less than any other department. It's kind of constant, a little bit. One final one is parks and gardens in terms of the amount maintained or the, any trends that way in terms of what you're dealing with?
Mean numbers?
Yeah, like, you know, are you doing the same numbers or you're constantly adding stuff and stretches what you can do or?
At the moment, it's constant. No, our numbers are still good. We have not lost any and we have not gained any at this current moment. We don't have any scheduled increases this year, we know. So we should stay constant as far as garden growth. Of course, maintenance is always an issue, depends on what nature throws at us and what happens.
Because I also wondered about plans for around this building now that things are maybe a little more settled.
As far as I know, we have allocated no plans for this year. Because I think continued destruction that's going to go on, probably wouldn't be better to look into the next phase of the area on this.
Okay. And I'll, I don't even necessarily need an answer, but I'll just ask the question, has there been any thought to any kind of plant materials that would, that could be planted at the top of the, I'll call it the pit walls, the first-level parking area that could grow down over the walls to soften the glare a bit?
I'm not sure.
The front parking lot, I think.
Yeah, front parking lot. If anything could be planted like on the sound walls, you know, that.
Like ivy or something?
Yeah. I wouldn't presume to say what it should be.
Okay, all right, yes. No, I hadn't made plans yet to do anything with the walls. I had, you know, ideas in my head about certain places, particularly where we have erosion problems and, you know, just to see a, some more green, but no, nothing with the walls. No ideas in my head. But if I'm asked, I'm sure I'll go up to something.
I would encourage some thought in that area.
But nothing that's going to cover the concrete, yeah.
I just wanted to say generally back on the question of parks and gardens, what we've tried to do, say, over the past, I would say, five years is, new gardens tend to be funded from project money, basically C W G money or some other pot of money. So we tend to get the actual installation or creation funded from an outside source. We haven't generally carried that within our budget. But of course, once it's created, then the maintenance lies within the budget. So that's been an ongoing area where we have to, you know, manage and pay attention to that. Of course, you know, there are trade-offs. An area that once was, you know, a place that had it in mode and now has turned into a garden, you know, there's maintenance on either side. Sometimes it's just a shifting from one part of the department to another. But basically, the creation of new gardens tends to be funded from specific outside sources and the maintenance is what we tend to fund through our Gardens Division.
I've just got one final question and I'll admit that it might just be me that's confused. But there was something, I'll find it here, in the, at the back of what we had. Here we go. It's Suzanne Loglo's memo on the Public Works rebate in answering Mark's question about what we get from the county to rebate for Public Works. And there's a particular part of it that has me a little confused. And it may be that, Barb, you can answer it, or Mark, or somebody, or maybe somebody goes to your right. There's, talking about the road and bridge reimbursement, it says the total of six hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty-three was then reduced by twenty-nine point eight three percent to reflect the portion of road maintenance paid by property taxes. Therefore, the amount received was four hundred and thirty pounds. And then the general note is that the county only rebates for those costs that are paid for by property taxes. So I can't quite reconcile in my own mind how they only rebate for that portion which is paid by property taxes, but the amount that we received was reduced by the portion paid by property taxes and therefore we got the rest of it.
I read the first sentence the opposite way you did. The third was reduced by twenty-nine point eight percent and the remainder reflects the portion of road maintenance paid for by property taxes.
I think that's correct.
That would make sense.
Because we know that the county pretends that the road maintenance that they do.
Is only paid out of property taxes.
No, they, no, if they did that, we would be happy. They allocate the portion of road maintenance that is paid for out of borrowed money as if it didn't exist. It's just, it's paid for by, you know, some great hand from the sky pouring money in there. And in fact, it's paid for by a bond issue that then they have to pay back out of their operating fund.
Which is paid out of property taxes.
Exactly. So, but they just sort of deduct that when they figure out rebate, like we're going to float a bond that we'd never have to pay back in order to cover that portion of our road maintenance.
Take it away, Mark.
I raised this issue last year, and I'll raise it again. This budget is the rawest deal we get from the county. It's a raw deal even to get a police department. And we stack up all the things we do, and it's funny to get rebated, because we don't get rebated for most of what we do. And I asked last year that we initiate discussions with the county, and I'm asking again, that we initiate discussions with the county, that they either adjust the rebate, to pay for all the things that they would have to do, or they take the stuff over that we don't want. Because it makes no sense to me to get a rebate that's roughly equal to what we spend on roads, or whatever they figure, which is in reality what we pay on the lighting in the city, in the Pepco bill, which they would have to pay anyway. That means it just drives me nuts that we pay the Pepco bill and we repair the roads, we get this tiny little rebate, which is, maybe it's a little bit more than our Pepco bill this year.
I think we pay around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-six thousand a year.
That all, because the last thing I said was one that Rick had, it was an even larger number, that was paid to Pepco. But the point is, it's still, whatever it is, it's not anywhere near what it costs to run a Public Works department or what it would cost them to provide the same services in the city. And I almost wonder if we'd be better off picking the things we want to do, say gardens and, you know, parks and stuff like that, and saying, you pay Pepco, you fix the roads and you fix a bunch of other stuff. Because this is an enormous discrepancy between what we're spending and what we're getting. And, you know, it particularly grieved me when I saw the memo about how they want to treat the police rebate. Whereas if we, if they decide that they've given us too much money this year, they're going to figure out a schedule on how we're going to pay them back. And I feel like, well, if this is the way this is going to play, then all these things need to be on the table. And I think they would take us a lot more seriously if we said, you can run a two-point four million dollar department for four hundred thousand dollars or whatever it is, knock yourselves out. But I think we need to have this discussion. We're going to get nowhere with them on this rebate unless we show our willingness to strike hardball with them. And I think we need to at least put this stuff on the table and say, if you can do it for this, here's the list of what we do, have at it.
And if I could add my rejoinder to, you can pay more for the, if we, you can pay us back if we overpaid on the police rebate, we can say, well, fine, we'll do that if you'll pay us back for what you've underpaid on the Public Works rebate all these years.
Yeah, I think we have to be a little bit careful about that. I agree with you, Mark. But for example, they do their solid waste on a fee basis.
So I'm not, and that, and.
We'll keep that.
Right. In the task analysis, it came out that we were better off doing ourselves. I don't want to give back. I said, they can choose the things that we do better, that we want to do ourselves. And that's that you guys have the rest. Because they can't pay for what we're doing and what they're giving us.
Take the roads, take the streetlights.
I think bridge maintenance, too, was one where we got practically no.
We got two thousand dollars.
Compared to what it actually would cost.
And as a practical matter, though, I think we, this is something that we would need to bring the other municipalities in also, because we can't renegotiate the whole thing just by ourselves. The issue of who is responsible for roads is one of those things that, you know, there's legal issues in there. What I would like not to do is get into this right now, okay? I agree with you, we deserve a much better rebate on Public Works, but let's not get into the details. If you want to do that, we can schedule another time to do that, but I want to get through the departments if we can.
I guess all I'm asking is, I mean, last year I raised this issue and I want to raise it again. I want us to basically present them with some kind of choices that they need to make looking at this. And we talked about it last year, it was just that we talked about a couple of, another department and a couple of operations in another department. I don't see any further information on those things either. And I want to put this stuff on the table. I mean, I think we've got to put it on the table to them and say, how do you want to handle this? Because we, and I understand that the formulas are themselves driven by what happened, the negotiations with all the municipalities, but we're not obligated to do stuff. There are other municipalities that don't do some of the things we do and the county doesn't. So we're not obligated. doesn't, so we're not obligated to do it as a result of negotiations of the municipalities. We can say, we're not doing it. We want to be like ex-municipality that doesn't do roads and doesn't pay for the streetlights.
Which municipality doesn't do roads?
Do they all do roads? I don't think they all do roads.
I, I don't know any that doesn't do roads.
All of them do their road maintenance, not on the budgets they're given.
I think, I think we just need, we, what we don't want to do is have budget discussion next year and we're having the same-
Or at the same place.
We're going to actually, on Monday, have a discussion of the TASI recommendations, and I think that would be the appropriate place to have this discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to change topics to something else that's probably not on tonight's agenda, but I, I know this isn't when we're talking about the capital improvement, but-
You are, you are.
Okay.
I think that's the next thing we talk about.
Well, since this group is at the table, I'm concerned about our facilities at, at the public works. And I just, I'm really curious on what the plans are. You seem to be kind of dismal in many areas. And I just wonder what the plans are for improving the facility.
Well, I think it was a year ago, we had an architectural firm that specialized in public works facility do a rough drawing, analysis, kind of projection for what it would cost, and I believe it was a million, a million five, something like that was their projection for cost for a public works facility. In the out years of the capital budget, I think you see reflected, at least on paper, proposal in terms of when we would do some design work and when we would do some construction work with the public works facility. Let's see. These aren't numbered, but-
If you look at, under the facilities section, it was contemplated that if funding was provided by the council, that there would be some design work-
Oh, yeah.
Going for a public works facility next fiscal year. Ultimately, the cost of doing any kind of major upgrade of the public works facility is going to be very expensive, and I think the council would have to have some discussions about how exactly that would be paid for.
Yeah, I, the intention, I think, was to do the part of the CIP that replied to each department as we did the department. And we, and we, I suppose that's the next thing you're going to get to in terms of your discussion, okay?
Okay, I'm, I'm a little lost in my book here.
It's under, it's under capital improvement.
Prove a tab, Terry, this is capital outline. That's the entire CIP.
I've got that, and I was looking for new facility in there.
It's on the second page, a little less than halfway down the sheet. There's a double line row called facilities, and the first one under it is public works. We've got security system, salt storage, and new facility design construction.
Thank you.
If we go back to the first page, I can just run down the public works affected capital items. Starting fairly close to the top of the page is public works vehicles. Basically, what you see, our proposal for oh seven is to replace one of our pickup trucks and one of our dump trucks in oh seven. Then beyond that, we'll start our leaf collection vacuum replacement. We have six leaf vacs, and so we, we historically have replaced one a year for six years, and then we are off for three years, and then we start the replacement process again. So, every year for the next six years, we'll be replacing one of the leaf vacs. I'll just speak to the fleet vehicles. As you may or may not know, we, the city has a, an equipment replacement, a vehicle replacement policy that mirrors both age and mileage, and so the escort reflected there for fifteen thousand dollar replacement has met the age and mileage requirements, and so is, is up for a replacement. I'll skip the IT thing, so that we're going to be the recipient of one of those items, which is the upgrade to the public works phone system, which will be a very welcome addition. Our phones go down anytime we have a heavy rain because of some, some problem related to Verizon and the location of their, one of their circuits, which gets flooded. This would actually tie us on, as I understand it, to-
Sub-ianic, sorry.
I don't think so, I don't think so.
Can we sign up with Quest?
The next page, under streets, many of those are public works related. We have the usual streetlight upgrade, which is a rolling fund that we use to, to deal with, address residents' requests for up, upgrades and new streetlight improvements. The street rehabilitation, which is actually the amount of money left over, let's see if I get this right, we, we propose to spend five hundred thousand dollars a year in, for street improvement over the next several years. However, a portion of that money is being used to pay back the two million and five loan that was taken out. And so, what you see remaining under the, the first line of street rehabilitation is the, the balance after the loan payment has been made. So, out of that five hundred thousand, there's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty that we'll have available to us for street rehabilitation in the next fiscal year.
It would be, it would be helpful if we could do it to have a piece of paper which showed the money that we're spending on street rehab out of this pot and the, and the loan pay, repayment in one table, so we could show that it is, we are making a commitment. I don't want someone looking at this and going, say, well, you said you were going to spend five hundred thousand, in fact, all you're spending is a hundred and thirty-seven.
The other item there that I think largely we'll be working with is a one CDBG street improvement, a hundred and forty, almost a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, which is my understanding has been allocated for Maple Avenue area right from this building and down to Sherman Avenue where we last stopped, you know, where we stopped the rehabilitation.
I'm sorry, that was the hundred and forty?
Yeah, a hundred and forty-one, nine fifty. And that's community development block grant money. Then into parks, there's the Jackson Boyd Park, which is the next playground, the only one, really, that we haven't updated within the past ten years. There's two sections of money there, one is for design, and one is related to the city's share for, I'm a little confused about how that's written, actually. My, my understanding was that one was related to design, and then the other was related to the portion of the city's needs, would need to spend for the special revenue funds, but I'm not-
It's a match.
We've got ten and three and sixteen, so I'm confused.
Yeah, I think, Daryl, my understanding when we talked about this is that there's a twenty-five percent match, which is shown as an operating transfer from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Yeah, that would be the sixteen, two fifty, but it's reflected in oh eight, so I'm not sure. We'll have to check into that one. The other is the B Y Morrison column repair, where you probably noticed at the intersection of Ethan Allen and Carroll Avenues, the tiles are falling off the columns in that facility. And we've actually under, it's, we've done a great deal of work on that facility this past year. We've had it power washed, we've painted it, we've repaired the stucco. The water fountain is now working, and it hasn't worked for years. The water fountain is now working at that facility, and will soon be power washing the concrete underneath it, so there's been a great deal of attention paid. We also have the lights back on in the front of the facility. We had one light out for a long time. Where is it? It's right across from the Co-op.
The Jones Center with the Johnson-
Yeah, Tacoma Junction, B Y Morrison.
Sister City, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, it's got a lot of names. And my understanding from having that looked at by folks that work in tile is that the tiles themselves that were installed on there, and I don't know when they originally installed, is actually an interior-type tile and an interior-type mortar, so it's a problem that we're going to be facing more and more in that, that building. So, there's one column where at least half of the tiles have now fallen off, the other column is starting to lose bits and pieces at a time. So, that's the amount of money that we've gotten quoted so far to do a tile replacement. I would love to see this turn into an art project through the Arts and Maintenance Commission, where we can maybe use that money as seed money to assist an artist in designing tiles or work in some other way to, as a community project, to do a tile thing. It's just two columns, so it's a very manageable project in that way. I mean, they're probably seven or eight feet tall, maybe two feet wide, square columns. So, it could be a lovely piece of community art, just throw it out there as an idea. But at this point, that funding is just set to replace a similar tile, an exterior tile back on the column. Let's see, the next is the security system at public works. The, the funding there would be used for a number of things. Some of the things we are looking at right now and getting pricing on are automated gates that, that could actually be swipe card activated, especially for the front gate, so that would open and close based on a, a locking system that has some security related to it and some ability to track and identify who's going in when, and also give us the ability to lock people out in certain times. If you have a card and you're supposed to get in in the daytime for work, this card won't work after four P. M. So, it's a way to improve some of the security we have there. We're also wanting to get the swipe card systems at numerous of the doors up at public works, particularly some of the equipment doors that accesses, you know, locked areas of fairly expensive and numerous pieces of equipment. And lastly, we've talked about a camera system at the gates, just to have an ability to, if there is a problem in the facility, something's missing, have an ability to go back and take a look at, at the, at the camera to see who's in there in the last twenty-four hours, to try to identify any potential losses that way. So, that's the type of thing that we're looking at, at the security system level at the public works. The salt storage facility pad, this is getting complicated, but we have eighty thousand dollars in this year's budget for the salt facility. And originally, there were some issues with the timing and the working out of the salt storage facility, so I thought we were going to have to push it into the next year. We'd purchased the dome, but we hadn't contracted for the pad installation and the walls and all the other pieces of that. Since talking to the dome company and, and trying to work some new angles on getting this thing installed sooner rather than later, I think that we're going to be able to make most of the investment in this fiscal year with the current capital budget. We have eighty thousand dollars in the current capital budget for that. I think overall, we're going to need ninety-eight thousand dollars for the salt storage facility. So, eighty thousand, that's allocated this year, at this point, I'm hoping to be able to spend before June thirtieth to get the existing facility demolished, the new area excavated, walls put in so that the dome can be set, and then the floor can be poured. We will need some additional funds to complete that project, so I actually like that number for the salt storage facility pad in preparation to reflect the eighteen thousand dollar balance that we're going to need rather than the seventy-five. So, that's an adjustment that we can make. Here, fairly shortly, we'll come to you with a request to award a contract for the wall construction of the facility. Originally, we were going to use our indefinite quantities contractor who does the concrete pours. He is going to pour the pad, and he is doing the excavation for us, but we've identified a new system for the walls that is much less costly than the poured walls that he was going to be doing. They're the precast walls, eight feet high, kind of come in ten-foot or eight-foot sections. So, we're trying to get some quotes, we've got two quotes, we're trying to get a third, and then once we have that available, we'll come to you for a contract award. It's going to be in the ballpark of eighteen thousand dollars for the walls. So, we're piecing that project together and, with all intentions, hope to have that in use for next winter season. Boiler replacement is the other one. We've been babysitting our boiler here in the administration building for quite a while. It's well beyond its anticipated useful life, though it's been working fairly well. We anticipate that with that replacement, we'll be able to get in, bring in some energy efficiency capacity with their stage pumps and things like that, so it actually would end up being an energy, a more energy-efficient boiler system than the one we currently have.
Solar cells?
No, no solar cells on that. We'll have to look at what the options are. The solar roof project that you see there is one that we've talked about before. It's basically taking preheated air from the mansard roof on the new facility in that little triangle up on the top of the building. Basically, it's just an open void, and so the concept there is to using ductwork and fans suck out the air that will be fairly warm relative to the rest of the air around it, and using it as preheated air into the, into the air handler system of the building. So, that project, we have a number of ways we could go with that. The total project is projected to cost thirteen thousand dollars. We can also do a performance contract with that and not spend any money, but pay for it over time based on the energy savings that we, we have. But if we were wanting to pay for the entire project upfront to get the most, it's the most cost-effective way to do it if you have the funds available, rather than paying, you know, interest rates and money over time, would be a thirteen thousand dollar project. Lastly, I'll just speak to the library window replacement. We've been able to do some improvements in the library, and I think we've really enhanced and helped that with the roof replacement that you all authorized. We also did the soffit and fascia replacement. We're waiting for the gutters, downspouts to come in, and then those will be replaced, and they'll be the same dark color aluminum that you see around the soffits and fascia of the building. And then we'll be painting the poles, the few poles that remain. So, that exterior will be really improved. However, the windows are just in really atrocious condition. Some of them don't even shut, you can't even close them, they're permanently cracked open. In the past, we did do a plexiglass storm window of sorts to try to reduce the amount of air inflow, but those are, are not holding up well either. The thirty thousand dollar estimate is, is a very well-researched estimate of what it would cost to get a good quality window in to the library that would match or meet the, the look of the building, you know, wouldn't change it into some vinyl sliders that really don't belong in a government building or in a, a library building that really would belong in a house. We don't want that type of, type of window. We want a, a window that looks like it belongs in that institution. Now, also, in talking with the window folks and library staff, it's, it's apparent that actually in libraries, you want to really control your air environment on the inside, so the ability to actually not have windows that open or close is a positive thing, which saves us a little bit of money. But many of the windows that we would propose to be put in the library would become sealed windows, not, not open windows, just areas for, for light to come in. And I think we can greatly enhance the operation of that facility, just in terms of climate control as well as appearance. It'll be the one remaining thing on the outside of the building that won't, won't have been updated, so we're hoping we can go ahead with that window replacement. I think those are our only capital items.
Questions?
Under the streets, listed, there's full problems of CDBG. And I just believe that's seven, so we can get in forty-one thousand, seventy thousand dollars, the entirety of our expected CDBG money?
I don't know.
I'm sorry, is your question, is the-
Do we get more than two hundred?
Are we committing all of our CDBG money to street? Three thousand or something? Yeah, as a reminder, we generally get about roughly a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year in CDBG allocations. The program year for CDBG does not match the city's fiscal year, and depending on the timing of projects, you may have more than one year's receipts reflected in our fiscal year budget. Basically, the way it works is you have to spend the preceding year's program year projects before you can start the next year, so there is some timing issues. But basically, we do get more than that amount in CDBG funds. I have to go back through Council member play and look at the actual program year. I believe that goes back to program year twenty-nine or thirty, I believe. And we're currently, I think the council just approved program year thirty-one or thirty-two. So, it's, it's not the entire allocation for that year. I'd have to go back and research what other projects were approved by the council if you'd like.
I don't really support using all the CDBG money on the streets.
Well, we did a switch out, is what we did. It's actually, we're using the equivalent of money for the community center. It's actually in effect going to the community center.
For how many years?
I think there was some CDBG funding allocated to street projects for approximately three years. The latest round of CDBG projects that the council approved did not, if I recall, include any kind of hardscape street improvements. There was some streetscape design for Maple Avenue, but it, it wasn't the same type of hardscape street improvements that have been done in some prior years.
Well, just, you know, one of the things I think about CDBG money is that it's an opportunity for the community to define projects that are, for the community, and we've been talking about how do we decide who we give twenty-five hundred dollars to and when we give them twenty-five hundred dollars, you know? I really think that's a great way to, to deal with that, is to really let the community determine what they want to spend those amounts of money on. And I do think that I don't see us spending much money on some of those little small, really small-scale economic development and small-scale art projects, like in the Forest Park area- Like, in the Forest Park area, I have folks that are interested in doing a mural along the part of the wall that goes along Conway Avenue that faces up to New Hampshire. And to me, you know, that says, you know, CDBG project. And I just want to make sure that there's...
I'm not sure that area would be eligible.
That there's money that's available for that.
The CDBG money is allocated based on a committee made up of residents who make recommendations to the council, so it is a community decision. For a number of years, the council decided that we were going to be using CDBG funds for the community center, but because of construction requirements, we ended up switching it out. In other words, we allocated it to the community center, but then we put it into roads and took the equivalent amount of road funding and put it into the community center.
If I may, Council of Play, I think you brought a little bit more information, just flipping through the special revenue fund. I was correct, the Maple Avenue road improvements were in program year '31. Some of the other projects that the council approved for that year, and some of these may be crossing fiscal years, was some funding for Hearts and Homes for Youth, which is an after-school tutoring program, the capacity building program, which assists tenants, as you may know. Also, in that same year, there was funding provided through the CDBG program for the SeaSafe Community Organizer. I believe that one was for Montgomery County. So certainly, the Maple Avenue improvements were not the only ones funded by the city with CDBG funds for that program year. For, I think, this year, and I don't think Daryl touched on it, because it's been really more, I think, overseen by planning in terms of some of the design, we're also anticipating in fiscal year '07 that we'll be able to start using the program year '32 CDBG funds. There are some improvements planned on Holton Lane and Ward 6, which would be more of a streetscape project, though certainly there are some other improvements in that area.
And Holton Lane would qualify, or more than the other area?
Well, remember, there are income requirements when you're using CDBG funds, right? My understanding is there are limited areas in the city where basically, CDBG funds can be used because of the income requirements.
Yeah, I did a block analysis two weeks ago trying to find what areas would qualify and how they would qualify, and also try to unchained if we're really, we're just kind of a rider on the county and they're doing a pass-through, and how that really relates to how we have to comply with those regulations.
If you would like, I know as part of the council agenda pack, and I honestly don't recall if that was before you were on the council, there was a map distributed as part of the community public hearing process that the mayor referred to, and as part of the council decision-making process that showed the areas that were eligible. If you'd like, I can get that for you.
Any other capital?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Two questions. First, comment on the salt storage, I really appreciate you finally getting to this project. I think it's been a real problem, environmental problem, for a number of years. Appreciate that you're going to resolve that, and I'm glad to hear that it's coming in under, it would be anticipated, the cost. And I assume that the wall system you're looking at putting in there is going to resolve any leaching problems with chemicals entered the stream. The other, I just had a question regarding the security system, and that is, I know that our police use the, you know, get their gas from the facility, and also the county fire equipment gets gasoline from this facility, and we don't have the automated gates now. How does that work, and what times a day, and is it 24-hour service that we provide for them?
Yeah, we do, they have keys. They have keys to our padlock on the front of both the police as well as the fire department. They just come in and unlock the padlock.
And they use those 24 hours, seven days a week?
Yeah, it tends to be sort of shift change. I mean, so it's not, you could pretty much watch it for a day and know when the different people come, you know, the fire trucks all come at a certain time, you know, throughout the day, and the police department always comes a shift change. So it's not, doesn't happen too much.
How do we control the payment for the gasoline in that?
We have gas cars that are currently used to pump gas with, and so a computer system tracks which gas car is used to pump gas, and then we print out a monthly report and bill the fire department accordingly.
Okay. And so the county reimburses us then for the price?
Yes, the fire department pays for it.
Okay. Thank you.
I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about the handout on the street restoration program. I really appreciate having all this information, it's very helpful. As I was going through it, I had a couple of questions. I understand that the small print is what we've done so far, right?
Right, the first page in '06 or so is what's been done since March ago.
Okay, and then you've got '06, '07, and so forth through FY '11. Is that the end of it?
That's the end of all the streets identified in the street study. Now, one of the things that we've experienced...
Can I just, I think you, that's my question. Is that the end of the really bad streets, or is that the end of all the streets?
It's the end of the streets from Fair down below, so all the way through Fair. So the remaining streets were rated good in the street study.
Okay, all right.
Can I get a clarification on the totals on the second page? Is that of all of the figures in the columns above, or is it a total of the ones where there's an actual cost associated with it?
I think that the numbers don't look correct to me, so I think there was something that happened in the cutting and pasting of the columns. Actually, we're coming pretty close to estimated streets.
What'd I call it?
In our first year, we found we were well under the street study estimate. The second year, we were a little above, and I think we're continuing to run a little above street study estimated costs generally.
But not double?
Oh, no, not double. So they're more, they're both within the same range, and we can send out a corrected sheet with that.
That would be helpful.
In fact, I...
Isn't there a large project coming into that list that's added in? Park Avenue?
Well, what we have found is there are some streets that were rated in the street study that we've decided to do slightly out of turn based on conditions or based on the fact that we're in the area, so they've affected the numbers somewhat. I'm looking for my own sheet here. The bottom line, in terms of what we've done to date, $2,519,000 basically is our actual cost, $2,526,000 was the street study estimate.
Daryl, can you speak to the schedule for state highways resurfacing, have any of the state roads that just carol out?
I would have to contact them and ask, I don't have any information about state highway on that.
Daryl, I think Mark caught it, the mistake is in the second from the bottom, Park Avenue?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. There you go, you got $2 million right there, yeah.
As opposed to $2,000?
And it should say, is that Park? Yeah, Park, it should say $51,821, so it must be doing a total there instead.
I thought that was a town hall.
Yeah, particularly when you estimated it at 2,000 and it came in at 2 million.
Yeah.
I thought they discovered that there was no pace underneath. And there was a secret facility put in under the street.
There's a number of errors on that last page, we just must have had some formulating wigging out, so we can get you a corrected sheet.
And then the ones on the last page, streets remaining, recommend for maintenance, these are the ones that you don't plan to resurface, that you plan to crack and...
Yeah, the pest dealing or patching. That PCI column, just to remind you, that's the, I can't remember that one, stands for the Performance Criteria or something, anyway, that's the rating.
Pavement Index.
Yeah. Yeah, pavement condition index. And so those were ones that were, they tended to be rated more towards the fair, the upper part of Fair, and in evaluating what was determined was that rather than resurface these, at this time, they would be maintenance candidates.
Okay, all right, now I understand, thank you.
There are some that know action at this time. There are streets that were on the street study list that we've chosen not to take any action on at this point, they're in conditions that didn't warrant it.
Okay. I noticed I wanted to replace the curves.
The only other thing I wanted to say about streets, and we've certainly tried to communicate this to the neighborhoods and areas where we're currently working, we're having a real problem with WSSC relative to them staying anywhere near their projected schedule for water main work. You know, we've been having this conversation for years, and while it is helpful that WSSC will at least entertain the discussion of doing cost-sharing arrangements with us when they come in and cut up a street where we've recently paved, we don't like to get into that situation. We'd rather hold off, have them finish their work, and then come in and do a resurfacing project. So the streets that you see concrete work only in FY '06, we were intending to do full resurfacing projects there. They're the streets that, two years ago, WSSC was supposed to be addressing within a short period of time. Now they're saying junior July they'll start those projects, and that they anticipate it to take 14 months.
14 months, another specific measure of which still they're going to do well.
They're going to start.
They say it takes 14 months to do the six steps.
Is this a place where it would be helpful for us to make some contact?
Well, I don't really have a sense of how politics can move this along. They have a very incredibly slow procurement process and contract award process and detailed development of their processes, of their contracts, so...
Has this changed over time? It got worse? It's just always been this way?
I think it's always been this way, but the thing that strikes me most recently is we probably had three different project managers on these particular projects, so there's a great deal of staff turnover within WSSC at the level of staff that does the design and contract work for these projects. So I think that may be adding to this, you know, it's been in one person's work plan, and then they promote it or retire, and it goes to another person's, and so we've had, we're on our third project manager on this project, all of whom have been very qualified and capable people and committed to the project, it's just been a very, very slow, slow process.
Maybe, Barb, could I ask if we could find out from the county whether they have similar problems, whether they engage in a similar process, whether we can... The county can help me.
Sure.
I was going to put it another way, but I won't.
At this point, I mean, everything we've got here laid out is a paperwork process. I mean, not knowing what one WSSC will actually get to things. What we were trying to show here is that the funds that were required, the funds within the loan, you know, how long they will last, in addition with the funds that we have allocated each year through the capital budget, and how far we will go, and it's basically falling within what we originally assumed, that it would take this number of years to get through this list, based on the funding level that we've had. So we still feel that we can do the work that was intended. Of course, as every year goes by, costs increase, so that's the one downside of having to delay and wait on this work for the WSSC project to finish.
Well, will build WSSC?
No, but I'm assuming that what happens is when you put, I mean, my street is one of those, it's been waiting a year now, and I think you told me it might be another year before they actually get...
True.
Yeah. But I'm assuming you do is when something gets bumped into the future, you fill in with things, the next items on the list. You don't just not do something in that.
Well, and where we are now is that we don't want to get so far ahead that we run out of funds for the streets that are in worse condition, so we're now in a process where we're having to sort of delay our own program. We were full guns ahead for the past two years, just mowing through streets. We're now at a point where we're having to wait in time and delay our procedure. We can't move ahead to the next street, because as you can see, the ones that indicate WSSC, there's a lot of streets there that are waiting on WSSC.
So I think that's the point that we make with WSSC, and if reasonable for the county, that it's costing us money, because we can't spend the money, it gets more expensive, their process is costing us money.
Yeah, well, I think what they would say is, go ahead, repay it then.
Okay, and then we'll double charge them for what we have to go back and do, and they carry the full cost plus, because it's not as good a street.
Well, we would have to renegotiate our agreement. Right now, of course, it works well for WSSC, because we are holding off, therefore, there's no cost share requirements on their part, they're not paying us 50% of the resurfacing costs, so they're...
So it's costing us more money and it's saving them money.
Yeah, that's...
But they throw in something into the mix, though.
Well, in streets, we have had contracts with them where they have paid a 50/50 cost share in streets that have already been paved, and they've come in to do street work. And there is much better communication in terms of them telling us, here's the list of streets that we're going to get to in our next round. Of course, that next round may be five years off, but then we can work with them and say, okay, well, this is one that we were planning to resurface, so we'll hold off, this is one that's already recently been resurfaced, so you got a cost share with us on that. So we pretty much take it street by street.
So one like my street, for example, which really has been on the list for a while, we wouldn't get any money from them, but they'd have to patch it. I mean, if they went and cut it, they would have to patch it anyway. They'd give us something for it.
Yeah, you know, we don't have any cost sharing arrangement with them, other than we're requiring now, as a result of all these worked here, for compression tests and compaction data, so that we don't have a situation like we have on Ritchie Avenue, where they came in, did the water work, we repaved it, and then you can see the trench sinking a year later, their subsurface work was inadequate, and, you know, we've got a poor-conditioned street as a result of that, one that will fail fairly quickly. So as a result of all these involvement...
We've moved into an agreement that this is the case, we would get to review their compaction data as we do, so that Ritchie Avenue doesn't happen again.
So, you know...
The other thing is that because of those six streets, their next 14-month schedule, we will have to actually hold up, not do any resurfacing, until these streets freeze up, because if we go ahead and spend the money on these streets that are in better condition than this, we will be faced with a situation where we won't have, you know, enough money left to do these streets.
But you have some additional money coming in every year, but that's not going to be enough for those streets?
There probably will be somewhat enough. The reason is, these streets are in really bad shape, and we've been trying to stay in order of the worst, like PCIs, or the condition of the street being a priority type, something like Elm Avenue happens to be one of those, 17 PCR. If we go to a 40, 45, 55 street, obviously, you know, it's going to probably cost more and delay the schedule in that fashion.
It would be great if we could somehow link something to the permits, not just for the water company, but for everybody who cuts into the street in front of their house, so that when it gets patched, it has to meet, you know, a particular criteria, because a lot of the damage that was done to Ethan Allen after it was paved a few years ago, you know, it's been ruined by people cutting into it and then just doing terrible, terrible jobs with the villain. It looks like they went to Home Depot and bought a couple of bags of that quick seal asphalt and chucked it out there.
There's a number of problems there. We do have a permit system for most utilities, however, WSSC is exempt from our permit requirements. So every arrangement we have with WSSC is sort of by the goodness of the heart of WSSC, they're not required through law to do what we can require Pepco and Washington Gas to do, where they have to submit, they have to submit an application, they have to identify what they're going to do, we have to give them a permit, we can set conditions. Of course, whether or not they follow conditions is based on how much we handle them and what the situation is. But on Ethan Allen, we have the added complication, because it's a state highway, we have no, we have no say over that, and unfortunately, state highway is, I think, very loose with what they allow in terms of, it's not even utilities, it's actually private contractors that get permits to cut the road.
Because where the water company came back in, I mean, after they had that giant ditch in the road for a few weeks, they finally did come back and they paved it, and it is the best patch on the entire road. It's all those other little pocket patches that were not done actually by the water company, which isn't, you know, technically doesn't have to do anything, it's all these other places, we should have a permit on them. It'd be great if we could hold them to that a little more effectively.
Yeah, or get the ear of someone in state highway to improve their requirement in terms of what they allow people to do and what the standards are that they have to meet and compete in.
Okay, are we ready to move on to stormwater? Do you have anything additional?
Just with a quick quest for any information that might let us know how difficult it might be to push the rock up the hill to get somebody to make WSSC fall under something. You know, just a sense of what we'd be dealing with, whether it's worth even going.
Unfortunately, given that they seem to be exempt from most requirements and other utilities, it's definitely already an uphill battle.
Would be helpful information, and whether it's worth trying to go to if it's... And whether it's worth trying to go to, if it's the state, say to the state, "Was there a reason for doing this? Wouldn't you like to change this? Wouldn't you like to have some input and do something for your residents?"
We'll put you in charge of lobbying that for the legislature.
I'll go with you.
Yeah. I think that's a worthwhile battle to consider.
I've seen...
It could be part of our legislative agenda.
I've seen WSSC come up before the state legislative committees, and they get very frustrated, but WSSC has all these grandfather clauses and stuff that they can do and...
Well, we'll ask of their grandfather.
Okay. I mean, I'm behind you, but I'm not willing to spend my time doing it. Okay, stormwater.
All right. We developed a stormwater budget in '07 based on the discussions that we had with council earlier in the year in terms of our projection of the need for an increase in the level of the budget to address the project needs that we have. So what you see in front of you is a budget that goes pretty close to meeting the numbers that we had laid out in terms of our projected needs in our earlier discussion. Maybe Ali wants to speak to this, this is his area of expertise.
I'd like to jump to the capital improvement. $100,000 for that. They have a business project that we are probably at a point where we need to do the plan, like to link on 350 feet of new line and Spring Park has been discussed a lot of times. There is a project that we just picked up last year, Cleveland Avenue. We also need to do that this next year. And for our subcontract maintenance, which is TV inspection and repair of some of the lines, plus the GIS, actually completion of our GIS maps, we have $150,000 figured there. And for engineering services, $250,000...
$25,000.
The total of...
Yeah, that's the total for the engineering portion.
So these are...
Yeah, the document that you have shows the projects that we've completed in 2006 and what we're proposing in 2007. We've also showed you 2008. And then there's additional projects off the chart that are out there identified by us but not yet targeted in terms of the repair year.
And this is in addition to your regular stormwater maintenance, that the storm sewers, cleaning and the inspection of storm sewers and stormwater?
Yeah.
So this is what we intend to do in terms of improvement and maintenance.
Did you say $150,000 for the GIS work?
$150,000, a combination of doing a third-in-the-city TV inspection. And in addition to that, we intend to probably get some money for MPDES compliance, as I presented to you earlier in February. Part of that, which is probably one-time cost, is to get our GIS upper-hanging, so we could go on with the MPDES, like interceptors, detection and elimination, testing on the watered asphalt, which is something we need to tackle with as an annual budget in the upcoming years. We haven't started that process here. So I can go into more details when I'm ready to answer questions.
$150,000, about 85 of which will go to the TV maintenance for the third-in-the-system, and about $30,000 will go into upgrading and updating our GIS system. And the remainder of the funds are earmarked for a stormwater maintenance project on Alden Avenue.
Barb, I wonder if this isn't an area where we might be able to work more closely with the county, because I'm sure the county does GIS mapping of the entire county, if that isn't something that we could piggyback on.
See, the GIS mapping that we're talking about is not just the general GIS surface maps, it's actually putting our specific stormwater data points into the GIS system so that we actually would have our pipes, our outlets, the type of pipe, the size of pipe, the direction of the pipe would all be within a GIS layer that could be interactive with our TV inspection program, actually. So the information that we're getting from TV inspection could be married to the GIS data that we have so that you could do a click-and-point and actually see what's being seen by the camera in a GIS form in its ultimate, ultimate end.
Do we have the GIS mapping of the streets and with the AMI?
Yes, we do have the base map. What we're trying to do is populate that base map as the terminology goes with data. Actually, there are streets, I don't think that that is available through the county. They do have their iron strip map, but now they do have a storm on the GIS system.
Yeah, and in fact, the base maps themselves we got from the county, so we started with their documents. Yeah, actually, parking planning, plus the original...
Good job.
I wanted to ask one just small question here. Looking at the full-time equivalence map, there was a question during the budget public hearing. Implication was that we were somehow hiding the cost of the city engineer. And as I look at it, city engineer and stormwater management are all laid out as part of public works personnel. Is there FTEs allocated anywhere else other than here?
No, just between the, the city engineer is covered 50% in the public works budget and 50% in the stormwater.
And whoever the other half-person is included?
Is it administrative personnel?
But I mean, this is all there is. There's not something that's being concealed someplace else. That's what I needed to hear. Yeah, thank you. Anything else? Anything else? Well, thank you. And if you could give us that updated or whatever it is, street thing with the column cleanup, that would be, I find this very helpful because I do get questions on that.
Do you like it electronically versus...
Sure. That would be good.
Is that for everybody?
Yes.
Yes, that would be good.
They just send it electronically?
You want it on the GIS map?
We don't have our street information now down to GIS maybe in a couple of years.
And we want you to send that through the wireless thing in the ceiling to our laptops, which we have right here, and then we'll ask more questions.
Yeah. See, that's why they don't want to do it. Okay, so if no one has any other questions, we're going to take a short break and then come back real quick for...
I think I could add, just real time. Going into this current budget year, it's not a big project, but it was significant to me. Administration reviewed my responsibilities and justified upgrading my position, and I want to thank the President. It was a boost to me.
Well, that's great. You do a very nice job with the guards.
Can we get positive feedback with the statistics?
Yes. Well, thank you all. We'll get back in just a minute. Or two, should I say?
I emailed it out to Marty. I appreciate that. I thought you all should have.
Good, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, I think we've got a quorum. So why don't we just go ahead and get started? The remaining department for this evening is to talk about recreation.
Just a couple of comments, one not specifically on the budget. Jesse just passed out two items that are not related to tonight's budget. One is just a follow-up on some discussion that's taken place before the council regarding Columbia Union's College illicit discharge into Sligo Creek. This was a specific issue that Councilmember Elrich had raised, as well as City resident Marty Itner. Just wanted to call that to your attention and get that out to you, as I did share it with Ms. Itner by email prior to the commencement of the meeting. The other item that the city court distributed is the agenda item for Monday night. It is the item dealing with the TASTI report, and we just thought it might be helpful, given the length of the report, if you had it a little bit sooner rather than later. We will also be emailing this, obviously, to those who participated on the TASTI committee, so that they have an opportunity to review it, and that they're aware of the discussion next Monday evening.
Good, that would be helpful.
Turning to the Recreation Department budget, as I've done with some of the other budgets, just sort of a brief snapshot of it. The revised figure, including the increased cost of employee health insurance, as opposed to what's shown on the budget at a glance, is $1,176,307. Like many of the city budgets, the majority of the cost in the Recreation Department is related to personnel costs, and that is the primary factor for the increase in the overall budget. With the change in the health insurance, the overall budget as proposed would be up by $67,073, which equates to a 6% increase. And as I mentioned, the majority of that increase is attributable to personnel. There were some specific issues that were addressed in the agenda cover, agenda item, which was a memo from Recreation Director Deborah Hadeven. There has been some sort of reallocation, if you will, between the various divisions in the Recreation Department. Hopefully, this memo can help you as you look through the budget to understand where some things have shifted. And of course, there's some discussions, which I'm sure Deborah can comment on, about a proposed before-school program. There's also some revenue and expenditure historical data included in the packet, and I believe, Deborah, you've also distributed this evening a couple of other items. One is some information on the proposed acquisition of a new vehicle for the Recreation Department, and then some statistics regarding program participation. So with that, Deborah, wherever you want to start.
Thank you. So you do have two packets now. The one that I just put on the desk, I'd like to start with that one. It's called the FY '05 and '06 Statistics. The reason I want to start with this document, and I'm not going to go through every item, is it pretty much gives you a good overview of what our trends are in the department. The main trend, I'd like to point out, a couple of them really, we're seeing an increase in resident participation, which I attribute to a couple of things. The opening of the community center and the ability to offer programs here, more programs, I think, has been a major reason. And I think the quality of the programs is getting better, and we're trying to respond to what the citizens have asked us to do. So we're pleased with that response from the community, and I anticipate that that will continue. And we may also get more non-residents. I think overall, we'll have more customers. The second trend, which is in the age of our participants, as you can see, our TOT programs, which we knew was going to happen when we opened the facility, the response has been really incredible. A lot more babies and toddlers are participating, and again, I see that trend continuing, particularly with the opening of Phase Two, when we're going to have the dance room and a place for kids to run around a little more. We're going to have mats in there, so it'll be a nice little humbling play space.
Lot more dogs.
Right. We have many more dogs than we ever anticipated, and that includes puppies and dogs. We're having a puppy boom in town, I believe. And our seniors, which I know has been one of our goals over the years, and obviously, having a space for them has made all the difference. And I will say that we've had great success with our staff's efforts at reaching the seniors, and I attribute a lot of it also to the help and openness of the library staff. They've been instrumental in keeping that senior room going for us. With the computers, that's been the, the original focus was on computers. But as it is, we have, right now, we have one staff member, one part-time person, Carol Anck, many of you know her. She's been picking up residents in the van, bringing to the program. So we're really not able to staff this room, and we really didn't anticipate staffing it. We wanted it to be a comfortable place for people to drop in. But it turns out that some of the seniors are very independent and don't need help with the computers, and some do. And the library staff has really been helpful. Phil Shapiro is actually helping teach one of the classes for the seniors, the computer class, which we have waiting lists for. So if we had maybe more teachers who were available in the middle of the day, it's kind of an awkward schedule to find teachers, but we've had great success with that.
Just, this reminds me of one thing. We were told by the county executive, first may remember this, some years back, that if we had a formal seniors program and a space for seniors, we were entitled to a rebate for that. So we shouldn't, we should leave that on our list.
Yeah, and earlier this year, well, or this fiscal year, I had a discussion with a member of the county executive's office staff about specifically that issue. As council may be aware, both Rockville and Gayakersburg do receive a rebate for what is referred to as elderly services. That is obviously something the council will be talking about Monday evening as part of the TASTI report. We would obviously have to have the programs up and running, is what they encouraged us to do, and to actually have some solid data that we could share with the county if we want to make a case for a rebate in that area.
Obviously, financial aid, as the participation increases, requests for financial aid have increased, and I anticipate that trend will continue, and that we will be as accommodating as we have been, and more so, with people who need assistance. And predominantly, it's been for camps and the after-care program, but we're starting to get other requests for people who just can't quite, you know, make it for, you know, they sort of see it as a luxury to spend $50 on a class, and so we try to help. We're getting a couple more adults, and so I was pleased about that.
What is our budget for that?
We don't have a separate budget. We just take it as a negative revenue, essentially, assuming that the program would be filled and this person was taking a slot, it would be a negative revenue. So it's not a real.
Okay.
Everything is on the increase. The one exception would be participation at the Tacoma Park Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue, and our weight room memberships are down, and our gym memberships. I don't, I don't really have an explanation for that. One thing, I can talk about it now, but for the next fiscal year, we're looking at changing the hours of the center. We've done some tracking of use, and it turns out, between the hours, we open now at 11:00, and I've had the staff track the attendance in the morning, and it's very low. It turns out that in some days, between 11:00 and 2:00 o'clock, we have nine or 10 people. You know, the highest number is perhaps 20. So we're really looking to make this facility after-school and the evening program, and we can save some money on, you know, obviously, the expenses. But, but we can target, it turns out that most of the users are the weight room in the evening, and so, you know, that wouldn't hurt those people. Obviously, the people who like to work out in the morning, they would be affected. It doesn't turn, seem to be a very large number of people.
I think some of the ones who use it in the morning are our own police officers. I wonder if there's any way we'd still be able to accommodate them?
I'm not sure if that's true. If it is, I mean, we would have to have it staffed. We'd still have to staff the building, so if we could work something out.
In some kind of schedule or something?
Perhaps. That's the, any?
Do you mention CPDC?
Okay, thank you, Barb. We're having very preliminary discussions with CPDC, the company that, or the, what is it, the nonprofit?
Yeah, they're purchasing Hampshire Towers.
That is purchasing Hampshire Towers. We have spoken with them before, we did site visits to some of their DC facilities. When we were researching the music and video lab, they have an incredible program and the ability to do great programs for their residents, and so.
They mentioned that in their presentation.
So we're hoping that we can work with them and best utilize the facility. And keep in mind, Park and Planning owns the facility, and I do think it's dilapidated, it's sort of old school, and I'm not sure that there are any plans to change that by Park and Planning. So we've done some cosmetic things, and I think we could do more of that, but, but it is what it is, and I think that, that it's still a useful facility. It is a gymnas, has a gymnasium, a small, very small gym. And so, you know, we continue to use it as best we can. I wanted to talk a little bit, I have a little audiovisual, it's really just a visual, not an audio, about the van. Many of you have been on the council for a couple of years, and this item has come up many years in a row, and here we are, and it's trickled in price. Actually, what we've done is, I started the research, we wanted to replace the van that we have, which is a 15-passenger van. It turns out, we really didn't want to replace it, we really need additional transportation. And during the research, I discovered that 15-passenger vans are becoming a thing of the past for safety reasons. And Montgomery County, actually, I believe the state of Maryland does not allow the use of these vans for school transportation. They do have some problems with rollover. Now, the statistics show that it happens when they're overloaded, typically with college-age students, and with a lot of gear, say athletic teams. And the speed of the vehicle makes a difference. So it turns out that, I believe, Park and Planning stopped using the 15-passenger van. People have moved to the 12-passenger van, and, which is, you know, essentially not very useful to us. In response to the council's questions last year about having an ABA vehicle, this was the research I came up with. The company, I gave you the brochures before you, there are two proposals. I asked for two separate scenarios, so you could see what's out there and the difference between them. The option I am recommending is option number one, which is a 12-passenger van with two-wheelchair capability of having two wheelchairs, and it has a lift. Now, the reason I'm recommending this is, with a 15-passenger van, you do not need a CDL license. As soon as you get anything over 16, it's treated as a bus, and so the staff would, and it's, I've looked into the CDL, it's quite an extensive process, and there's classes and training, and I would think we would really be limited to who could do it. Right now, most of the recreation staff, they have driver's license, and they go to defensive driving, and then they're eligible to drive the van. Of course, they'd need to be trained, and this is a bigger vehicle. The beauty of this vehicle is that, two things, the seniors will be able to use this for transportation, has a much lower step, and we're finding that the real problem with the seniors in our van is it has a very high step, and once they get in, they have to, any of you have been in the van, you sort of have to climb over the wheel well, and it's very, very limiting. The bus, or the van before you has a center aisle, and you can walk up two fairly low steps, walk to your seat, and really much more accommodating. So it serves two purposes. We can use it for our seniors, and we can double the amount of transportation that we have. And what we're finding is during the day, is when the seniors need the transportation. In the summertime, we could probably have five vans and use all of them. So the increased capacity, I think, will be able to serve many more people in the community.
Now, in terms of, it seats 12 people, and there's not an option of putting more seats in it?
There is, the, one of the seats folds down, and so it becomes a 14-passenger, 15-passenger, if you include the driver, which you do. So you could have, you could use it as a wheelchair lift and put two wheelchairs in there, and then have 12 passengers, or have no wheelchairs and have 15 passengers. So when it's used, obviously, for seniors, and not, you know, not, I don't know how many seniors use the wheelchairs, but, but now we can accommodate them.
And if you were using it for a group that didn't have anyone with mobility problems, you could fit a larger number of people?
That's right, and you fold the seat down.
Although, we shouldn't assume that young people, there aren't young people with mobility problems, and we could accommodate them also.
Deborah, aside from price, and I don't see the price on option one.
They're both at this, they're both on the same page.
But aside from price, is there any reason why you picked one over the other?
Well, the CDL licensing is really what changed my mind. Plus, I mean, that's basically it, why I wanted the smaller one. It would be nice to have a larger capacity, but then we get into, like I said, having to get people licensed, where do we store it? It becomes more like a bus. It's not that much more expensive, as you can see, I believe it's three to four thousand.
Thirty thousand dollars there?
It's just that it kicks in this whole other regulation.
What's the trigger number?
Sixteen.
Sixteen is the trigger?
Yes.
Fifteen, you're good, sixteen, yeah. Could we pick out a six?
And it doesn't matter how many people are riding, it matters what the capacity of the vehicle is.
If you pull a six.
Huh?
Pull a six, it's all a capacity issue.
Yeah, actually, you would. When I worked at the city of Oakland, you know, we had the 15 and 18-passenger vans, and we ran into that issue all the time of not having people who were qualified to drive the vehicles, but there were kind of two sides to that, because the other side of that was the people who were qualified to drive the vehicles were our better and safer drivers, they were our longer-term employees, and it was, it was trickier scheduling. We had a much larger program than Tacoma Park does, so there was greater capacity.
Larger than we have yet.
Well.
Larger than we'll ever be.
Four hundred thousand people in the city, so.
Any other questions about the van?
I think it's a, it's a good idea to have a wheelchair-accessible van, and I also like the idea of the lower step, because I think that that is part of the problem with the seniors, is that it's just too hard to get into some of the others if somebody's got, they're not in a wheelchair, but they do have mobility limitations. I think that would help a great deal.
Well, what Carol's been doing is she's been having to take runs with the city cars, and taking several runs, because the seniors can get into the cars. I think that this will be much more efficient.
This is the same kind of van that places like Ryder would use to take people around, all of them.
Have you driven these? No, not yet. The salesman has offered to bring it to the city and have us take a look at, which I would like to do. And I did want to mention that. a look at, which I would like to do. And I did want to mention that this company has a state contract.
Oh. So is that the, I'm sorry, I apologize. In terms of the cost, so the cost he gave us is the individual cost, so we could get it cheaper?
No, that's the, that's the state. No, that, I want to say, that's without options, that the price that he gave us. And one of the options that I thought would be important to have is a back door that you can open.
To get the wheelchair shift.
Right. Or other things.
But it has, but it has a back door that has the wheelchair lift on it?
No, that's a side door, no.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're talking the back of the van?
The back back, right.
Okay.
And, you know, he gave me this price. This is not, you know, what we would be ordering. We'd really have to look at, I want to make sure that there are seat belts, and that everything that we want is, you know, we're going to be looking at the safety of the vehicle. That it has everything that we want. The amount in the CIP, I believe, is two, what is it, Barbara, do you remember, fifty?
It's fifty-three thousand.
Okay. So we're.
Where do we go?
Right.
I'm sorry. And, do you have a question?
Well, not a question, a consideration. Longtime motorhome family driver, I am, and worked a lot with people, well, thirty-five years. This is like driving a motorhome.
You may be, you may get hired by the recreation department.
Good, part-time and in the eight months. I did it one time. You know, it's the exact same kind of chassis. You know, my parents started out with a 19-foot motorhome, and then went to the 26-foot motorhome. It was really, it was different. But I would suggest, I would just like to suggest that you keep an open mind about the one and the two, because I think you might find that, once you drive them, and you're thinking about who your folks are, that are your employees, even with option one, even though it's legal for you to drive it without having gone through the commercial training, you might find that you think, gosh, you know, I would really want people to have this commercial training before I let them get into this vehicle anyway. It's just a really, it's a different feel. It's different than anything, anything else that you're going to drive. And you're not going to pull people off the street who haven't had some kind of previous experience, I think, in their family, that are going to be really proficient drivers in this without some significant training. I mean, it was difficult for me, and, you know, I used to help my parents back, we had a giant boat, and we'd back up the boat, and tow the boat everywhere, and I can back trailers and everything down this, down, it is.
He's talking, because I'm taking his advice.
Okay. But I would just like you to-
It's a good point.
It is a good point.
I would just like you to kind of keep an open mind regarding that, because I think it might be, once you go to this, for the $4,000, or whatever it is, you might as well have this and invest in, in the training. I have another question about the financial aid aspect, and the resident versus non-resident participation. Are we doing a good job of tagging people who are residents and non-residents in the, in the fee differentiation in the programs, do you think?
What do you mean by tagging?
Do we have, we have a different fee for people who are residents?
Yes, we do. And what we've done, we don't give financial aid to non-residents, only residents of Tacoma Park. And we do have a graduated scale for non-residents now, ranging from ten to, actually, five to, depending on how much the program is, to about $30 differential for residents and non-residents. And we do keep track of that. We get proof of residency from our participants.
Okay.
We find that many people think they live in Tacoma Park, and they're surprised when we inform them that they do not.
They don't live in the, in the city.
Right.
They live in the post office.
We get emails from them.
And the other question I have, related to the, to the financial aid, is that you said we don't really have a budget for financial aid. When you design the program cost, do you build in a certain number of financial aid slots?
I do not, based on the wishes, the way I understand the wishes of the council and the community, that no resident be denied access based on their ability to pay. Now, if that's, if you want to have a different discussion, we can do that.
I just wondered how we did it.
No, it's just basically, anybody who can help, we do.
Right. When I used to design programs, I used to set it up so that 10% of the slots were available at full scholarship. And then, you know, if you had somebody that needed a full scholarship, that was fine, or I could give out, in a class of 20, at four, those can be 50% scholarship. I just wondered how you, how you set it.
One consideration to that is when the county considered our request for funding for the gym, one of the conditions that they put on it is they did not want us to charge different fees for city and non-city residents.
For city and county residents?
Right. But I'm assuming that most of the people who come and use our facilities are from Montgomery County. I mean, you're correct. If somebody was from the district or from Prince George's, presumably they wouldn't care.
My one comment on that is, well, we do get district residents, probably not a significant number. But I do know that the other municipalities, Rockville and Gaithersburg, do have non-resident fees. And Montgomery County also has non-county resident fees. So it's, it's a very common practice in recreation programs, based on, you know, it's a fee for service. And so I think we can have that discussion.
I think they're going to set it as a string on the money that we get, so.
Does vehicle number one, the General Motors car, does that trigger the free zone issue? I believe it will.
Yes.
I think GM is on, I think Ford isn't.
Ford, Ford is not.
These are Fords that are shown in the picture here.
Yeah, because number one, GM.
Number one, GM, with a Ford body.
But the, but, you know, I agree with Colleen's comment about considering a larger vehicle on general principles. But the new free consideration would be an additional reason why, because I'm not sure that, you know, the fact that it's a couple of thousand dollars less, but also smaller, would justify going, would be a reason for going outside the ordinance. So I'd be leaning toward the vehicle number two as well.
The, if you look at the back, these are just two that have been identified. There are many configurations we can look at, if that's what, the direction we want to go in. So we don't only have these two options. If you're saying, you're saying Chevy is the GM?
Yeah.
So if you look at the Ford, there's many options here. I do think-
In terms of size?
Yeah. But then you get with or without the wheelchair, and, you know, there's a 20-passenger.
And that's our price off. We only have, we've got 53 in reserve, but I don't think it means, it's, we'd want to figure out how much we have to spend. A little difference is a little difference.
I understand.
But I'm not interested in coming back with options.
Yeah, I just want, just want to be clear that this is, there's 53,000 proposed in the budget, but it's not coming out of the equipment replacement reserve.
All the more reason not to.
Yeah, because we had this issue, discussion last year, and there was some mistake on our part, so. There's a 12-2 right, right here on the Ford page, right above this.
Right.
If I can just piggyback on the comments on vehicles one and two, before hearing about the CDL, I was, you know, going the same direction, to go to two, to get more capacity for a little, just a little bit more money. But thinking about Colleen's comments, I have experience with larger vehicles as well.
There we go, I got two now.
And, you know, I backed a lot of trailers, too.
I'll do it.
But I would caution, I would caution that the difference in the, in the capacity that triggers it is the length. The height and the width are the same. And the thing that will kind of be the gotcha for, if you go with vehicle one, and you have people who don't have the CDL, the thing that's more likely to be the gotcha is they get fooled by the, by the wheelbase, and as related to the width, and they try and turn too tightly, and they get hung up on the side of the vehicle, or go over curbs and that kind of stuff.
That's okay.
Yeah. And I would also observe, when you said something about RVs, that I know that the city employee in question, who has been ferrying the senior citizens, owns or owned an RV. So.
I believe she may have a senior.
I think she probably does.
But she's working with seniors, too.
Terry.
Thank you. I drive a Honda Civic, so I'm going to come in and I'll get off the bus and talk about programs. I would like to see us bring a program forward for development of life skills. And I don't know if that's something we can do with staff, or if you can suggest some nonprofit organization that we might work with to encourage them to offer a program here on life skills.
For which, what target audience?
Target audience would be low-income members of the community who need to move to self-sufficiency.
Adults or kids?
Adults. An adult program, what I have seen in other communities is a preponderance of young adults, often single-parent families, who are challenged not just to become self-sufficient, but to, to develop the skills necessary to attain a job and keep a job, to understand some of how to work the system, to get the assistance that they need to provide for some of the childcare vouchers and housing assistance that they need, and then how to, to not just get that assistance, but it's a long-term program that actually helps to move them towards the self-sufficiency. I can give you some example of, from another community, where they're doing that, but I think it's something that would be a great value in Tacoma Park with residents.
So in terms, so like hiring a contractor to come in and do the work?
I would leave that to you, as far as sort of hire a contractor, or be a program that we, that we could put together.
I think it's a little bit of a different direction from what we do, more of a social service.
Yeah, and I think it's-
And if you all deem that to be appropriate.
I'm familiar with some of those programs. And you really, the value of the program depends on how good the person who's teaching it, how good they are at teaching, and also how, how well they know the system. And you don't, it's not something you can get a volunteer or someone who teaches recreation services necessarily to do. You really need somebody with skills in that particular area's social service system, job market. Those aren't inexpensively paid people.
I know that in last year's budget discussion, several councilmembers expressed the desire that the city not move into social services. And I think that, that we as a community have an obligation to our neighbors to try to help them in what ways we can. And so I was looking for a kind of a compromised position, this is not actually offering vouchers for housing or for childcare, but actually helping to assist with the education of the residents, so that they could afford self-sufficiency.
I agree with what you're trying to do, Cherry, but I think that the critical need that we could fill, and that we're more already capable of doing, is the, is the before and after-school care. Because for a lot of those people, the critical need that is not filled is for childcare. And they can't, particularly if they have school-age kids, they can't find someplace to take care of their kids at before and after school. So if I, I think if we can develop a robust before and after-school care capacity, I think we will be doing a lot for people who want to move in that direction. And it's something, it's not, with the childcare, the problem is not just people don't have the skills to find it, it's that it doesn't exist. And that's a really crying, I mean, I've been involved in the kinds of programs that you're talking about. And they have people who are trained and ready to go to work, and they can't go, because unless they have a family member who can take care of their kids, there's no capacity in any of the qualified childcare facilities for their children to go. And so they end up waiting until either they can, you know, drag someone in to look after their kids, or they can, or one of the slots opens up in a qualified childcare facility. So if we could provide that kind, I think we would be doing an enormous amount for the community if we could provide that capacity.
No, I agree with you, and I appreciate the suggestion of, you know, developing a childcare program here at the city. But I would like us not to shut the door on providing some resources to, at least to an organization that might come forward with a program that would help with the development of life skills.
This might be something that we could do as a partnership, because if we, if there is an organization that does something like that, we might be able to provide them space and, you know, provide our citizens access to their program.
Isn't that a perfect block, a program?
To start it, to do the startup of it would be a good block.
Yeah. As I said, it's, it's not just some, the kind of thing that anybody can do. You want to get the right people, otherwise it just, it doesn't, it doesn't work very well.
Yeah, I think it's a great program idea. I've worked in both recreation and doing exactly the kind of independent living skills that you're talking about, except with kids, not with adults. And it is a, it's a long-term process. You have to have a connection to the folks, and I think that's an anchor, maybe, that we don't have, one of the component pieces that we don't have here. And I would get over the comment that providing a space, maybe, with a, with a partner. I've had some conversations with the Silver Spring Y that would be interested in doing some more activities in Tacoma Park and providing some support services. And they have, you know, a little bit more of that capacity than I think our own recreation department would have, and they have other, other mechanisms to provide some of the funding and support for it. It's really, it's really intensive in terms of an activity.
No, I agree, and I appreciate the suggestion design. It's a good discussion that we have. And I was basically looking for suggestions rather than saying that the rec department should do it. But I think it's a, it would be a good use of the facility and good use of the resources that we have, that we not only provide recreational programs, but also a social service program.
You know, I thought about a similar program. I read last week that the county had devoted a significant amount of money toward English.
Yes, yes.
And it seemed to me that this would be an ideal location for such a program, the county was presenting it, and we could offer it at no charge to our residents. Because we did offer a language program. We found a good instructor, and, you know, it was a paid instructor, and we just found people didn't respond, or, you know, it was-
They weren't aware of it?
No, I think it was maybe too expensive. A lot of people needed it to be either completely subsidized or close to it. So those kind of partnership opportunities, we'll really be looking for, and I'm going to hunt that one down.
Yeah, that sounds like a good one.
Deborah, I would encourage you to speak with the director at the Gilchrist Center in Beaton, because they have a very successful language program there. Part of that is because of the volunteers who work with the program, but they've also developed some good strategies with providing great flexibility in their programming, so that it's basically a drop-in program. And they've developed a course that they can move people along at their own pace with a class of mixed experience.
I did want to, the last thing I want to talk about was the before-care program. We do not have one now. There has been feedback from the community, a lot of questions why we don't have the before-care. And we didn't have a real facility to do it. And I feel like now, we're pretty well poised to offer it. And I'd like to suggest that we do it on a pilot basis next year.
That's a good idea.
And assume that, I think we need to set a minimum of the number of people that we can do it for. I know that the Y has raised their prices, and we've heard that from people, and, you know, they have to, they have pretty large budgetary needs. And my understanding is, just went blank on the name, Morgan Day Care is filled to capacity, so it seems to me there is, there could be a need, and I think that if we couple it with our afternoon programs, and maybe market it, and, you know, two-for-one, not exactly two-for-one, but discounted rate if you sign up for the afternoon program, I think that we can build something here, so.
It's a very necessary service, I don't know how parents manage with the school schedules, yeah.
And we've been able to operate our after-school program, basically break even. Even with the, I would, I think with, if you factor in the scholarships, you know, we might have done slightly better, but I think that that's a good target for us to break even.
Yeah.
We could raise the price and make money on it, but I'm not sure that that's what we're looking to do.
Break even sounds good to me, because it's a very necessary service.
So that's all that I had, I don't know if you have any other questions?
Is there anything we need to talk about in terms of the use of this building? Do you have any? I mean, aside-
Do you want to come the next time?
No, no, I mean, not the separate discussion we're going to have, but any sort of overall-
The only thing I want to say in behalf of the recreation staff is that we're very much looking forward to coming into the building, I feel like we've been trying to provide good customer service, and because we've been in the trailer, that this public has been scrambling to find us, and the administrative staff here has really picked up the slack, slack for lack of a better word. And I just feel like when this front desk opens and we're here, and then we're open to the computer lab, the flow is going to be so much better.
I think we found a solution, may I help that, we're going to close the front parking lot?
Okay.
And then people will be wandering around looking for parking, maybe they'll find you in the trailer.
Yeah, we'll paint the trailers in nice colors. And, what was the other thing I wanted to say about that? Oh, I do think the way that we've been treating this, the whole opening of each segment, is with open minds and that, you know, we're learning as we go. We learn patterns of how people move and what their preferred entrances, things like this. So I think as long as we maintain our flexibility and try to tailor our policies as we go forward, and not get too bogged down in, you know, hard and fast rules at this point. So I appreciate the council's willingness to float some of that, it's been interesting. So that's what I was.
Okay.
Can someone just mention in jest, though, the parking lot, I did want to let the council know, it will not be starting tomorrow, we have not received the necessary documentation and assurances that I'm looking for from James F. Knott, in terms of the scope of work to be performed in the parking lot. I had asked for written confirmation and some documentation to verify that what they were going to be doing was 100% in conformance with what has been recommended by the structural engineer, that was not received as of yesterday, I sent both an email as well as a fax to James F. Knott, advising them that they could not proceed unless that information was received, it was not received by the close of business today. We sent a follow-up letter this evening, basically telling them that we would not be clearing out the parking lot tomorrow, that work would not be commencing until we got the information we were looking for. So parking lot will be available tomorrow, if you want to come by the building.
Okay.
May I clap some everybody?
May I?
Yes.
Yeah, Barb, since we're talking about issues in the community center, I noticed that there's one column that's in the hallway that is not open yet, between the teen room area and the technology center, or the computer learning center. There's a beam in there that you can, or a column that, when you're walking from the front of this building around the walkway towards the technology center, as you're walking up the side of the building straight ahead,
Inside building or outside?
If the column is on the inside, you see it through the window, that it's an unfinished column that appears to be no way to finish it, because there's glass on its side, it's right up tight against the window. It's kind of unsightly, and I just wondered what the plan is.
Is that the temporary wall?
No, no, it is a column, it looks like a permanent column, it's right up against the window. If you have trouble finding it, I'll-
No, how much you're describing it shouldn't be that hard to see. I will take a look at it when I return to the office on Monday, and hopefully have some information for you Monday evening.
Thank you.
Completely called it deconstructivist architecture.
I do have one more question, I should have looked through my notes all the way through. I noticed that on the budget summary, you've zeroed out the outreach program?
Yes.
Distributed it through all the other areas.
Right, I redistributed it for the reasons I said in the memo. I just feel like it was not producing the desired effect, we ended up with separate programs that I think for no other reason than that they were called outreach, and I feel like every division in this department is part of our mission, is to do outreach, and to separate it out is awkward, and I think that now that most of the programs will be centered from the community center, a lot of the funds went in, for example, Carol Anck's salary, she was in outreach, so she's outreach-ing to the seniors. It made more sense to me, for example, to put her in the community center budget, because this is where the programs, and I think we'll be able to show the kind of use the building's getting, where her efforts are, she's obviously going out into the community. But to have it separated out in a different account, when the staff was working various programs, it was a false, a false sort of budget.
Is there a way to sort of track what kinds of outreach activities the various staff members are doing?
We can do that.
Because I think that would be helpful, I think particularly when the teen sections are open, sort of making sure that the teens know about it, feel welcome, their concerns, issues, desires are incorporated into what we do is going to be critical, or they won't use it.
That's correct, we can do that.
Okay. Anything else? Nothing else, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.